We're good to go.
Thank you. Thank you and good evening. This is the regular meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council. It is Tuesday, April 28th, 2020, 5:30 PM. We are holding this meeting via teleconference. I will do roll call for establishment of a quorum. Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Heller, are you here?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis. Let's remember Addis. Councilmember Davis.
I am here.
And Councilmember McPherson.
And I am here.
And once again, Councilmember Addis. Councilmember Addis, is that you? Okay, we do have a quorum. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. If you'll stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. With that, I will ask our esteemed city attorney, Mr. Nirmire, do we have a closed session report?
No reportable actions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with that, I'll move us to the mayor and council members' reports. Let me, let me start out with an update on COVID-19. For our community, as of 4/27 at 1700 hours, the San Luis Obispo County case count was 171 confirmed positive COVID-19 cases. We've had one death in San Luis Obispo County. The age range primarily in terms of distribution for the majority of cases is between the ages of 18 and 64 years. 64 years, although we're seeing an uptick in the 0 to 12 age range. We now have 12 cases, pardon me, 0 to 17 age range. We now have 12 cases in that age range as well. The majority of cases are in North County. North County has 100 of the 171 cases, primarily in Paso Robles with 55 cases, Tascadero 29 cases. In the Central Valley area, Central Coast area, San Luis Obispo, 14 cases with four in the other areas. With regard to coastal communities, Morro Bay remains at six cases. We've been at that number for a significant amount of time. Aurora Grande, 19 cases, and Napomo, 14, Pismo, 17, and Grover Beach, two cases, just to give you an idea of distribution in the county. Majority of cases now have been person-to-person contact and/or community transmitted cases. Initially, there were a large number of cases that were acquired through travel. In nearby counties, a majority of nearby counties have much higher caseloads, just to give the community a sense of those numbers. Monterey County, 183 cases with four deaths. Kern County, 828 cases with five deaths. Santa Barbara County, 471 cases with seven deaths. Fresno County, 458 cases with seven deaths. Tulare County, 532 cases with 32 deaths, and Ventura County, 497 cases with 16 deaths. In San Luis Obispo County, fortunately, 135 of the 171 patients have recovered. 31 are now at home recuperating. We have four in the hospital and none in the ICU. And as reported previously, one death, which was early on when we first started reporting case, the case numbers to you. The county of San Luis Obispo has developed an alternative care center. As many of you know, there are now 167 what I'll call beds available at the Cal Poly Alternative Care Center. Those beds currently are unoccupied but are on standby should there be a surge in the number of cases and/or a lack of hospital capacity. As of today, the county hospitals have adequate hospital beds, adequate intensive care unit beds, although those numbers are declining, and significantly adequate ventilators available to handle COVID-19 patients should there be an increase in the number of cases suddenly that would require hospitalization. There has been, I think, recently reported in the newspaper, this notion about San Luis Obispo County wanting to reopen, and I wanted to address that and specifically speak to the process associated with that. San Luis Obispo County, through the Public Health Director, who is in control of not only the response to COVID-19, but also the reopening program, have begun a process of looking at development of a plan should the governor lift the shelter-at-home order that he has given. And now, please know that unless the governor does that, nothing can happen in San Luis Obispo County. There was recently a letter sent asking the governor to consider allowing San Luis Obispo County to implement its plan once it's developed. And with that, the Public Health Officer has been in the process of obtaining a significant amount of community input from science-based individuals, medical individuals, business sector industry, elected officials, et cetera, to prepare a first draft of a reopening plan. The plan is incremental in the way that it has been constructed, is science-based, based upon epidemiology, has measuring parameters or metrics for moving forward with reopening and/or moving backward should the reopening result in a larger number of cases, et cetera. The input to date has been through committees led by a mayor and a selected council member, along with the city managers of each community, initially also involving a number of business sectors within each community. That information's been collected by Wade Horton, our CAO, who is presenting that information to the Public Health Officer and then making a recommendation according to a call that we had yesterday with the elected officials to actually represent a final draft of the document. That draft will then be circulated to each city for community input, including city council input before it is implemented. So I wanted to clear up potentially a notion that San Luis Obispo County is trying to move ahead of the governor's order. That's not true. There's a desire to have a significant amount of local control with regard to decision-making, and that is the ask of the governor within the parameters that he has outlined for reopening of the state, but also the guidance given under the control of the Public Health Officer in the county of San Luis Obispo. And I want to thank Councilmember Heller for working with us this week, and our city manager also for working with the team of individuals in our community to give input on that very early draft. With that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember McPherson, anything to report?
I just have one very sad announcement to make. We lost one of our Morro Bay citizens a couple of weeks ago. Mimi Goldberg, who was very well-known to the city council, came to virtually every meeting of our council, as well as to advisory board meetings, and she was a passionate and tireless advocate for the homeless. So we will miss her, and I just wanted to extend my sympathies to her family. So, thank you.
Thank you, and she indeed will be missed. Councilmember Heller.
A couple of announcements, which I made before, but I think it's an appropriate time to make them again tonight. I'm not really a social media person, but I've been told for some time now that I need my own Facebook page. So I now have Jeff Heller, City Council, as a Facebook page. And my intention is to alert people to meetings, to post information there, answer questions that anybody might have. So those of you who use Facebook, please take a look at my Facebook page and like it and follow me. Again, I'm not sure what that means, but I've been told that's what you're supposed to do. The other thing I wanted to announce is about three weeks ago, I generated a petition through change.org, which was sent to elected officials at the state and federal level asking that they bail out California cities from the CalPERS albatross that has been tied around our necks for some time now. I would appreciate if you would go to change.org and look for this petition. It's called Fix California Pension Problems, Once and For All. If you could sign it and send it to your friends, trying to make some kind of an impact on Sacramento and Washington DC to alert them to how urgent this problem is for our city, particularly in the context of the pandemic and the economic consequences from it. Lastly, I would like to say we're probably all more stressed and tired and worried than we're aware of. And I just encourage everybody to do what you can to take care of your own health. Try and get some exercise, walk around, do yoga, read, whatever, whatever you need to do for yourself. Please take care of yourself first, and then you'll be able to help others. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Addis, any updates?
Yes, unlike Councilmember Heller, I spend quite a bit of time on Facebook and social media. So I wanted to thank the participants who've been coming to my, the Morro Bay community calls. Last week is the last call that I'm going to host because I've shifted over to Women's March hosting calls. And so I want to invite the public to those Zoom calls. They're at 5 o'clock on Wednesdays, and you can find them on the Women's March, so Facebook page, as well as the website. Last week, we had Dr. Joy Carter, who is actually the Slow County Coroner, the first African-American woman ever to be a coroner, and shared information and her perspective on the coronavirus crisis. And then this week, we're going to have a woman from the Slow Maker space who started the website service for slow.com. And she has really engaged the community in mask making. And there's a lot of people out there who are still looking for masks, who can't afford to buy them. So there's quite a community effort going on there. And then the next week, we'll have somebody who's going to speak about reproductive rights during the coronavirus crisis. So I invite everybody to join us there at womensmarchslow.com. And then in honor of Child Abuse Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, I did want to read off the phone numbers for the Child Abuse Hotline, the Elder Abuse Hotline, as well as risew slow.org, because we are hearing reports from the county that not only are the number of reports going up, but the number of verified situations of abuse. So the Child Abuse Hotline, if people didn't see it in the packet, is 805-781-KIDS or 1-800-834-KIDS, or people can go to slowcounty.gov. The Elder Abuse Hotline is 805-781-1790, or you can go to slowcounty.gov. And then the Rise Hotline is 855-866-7473. So I wanted to make sure, to Jeff's point about, you know, taking care of oneself if you're experiencing abuse as a child, an elder, or intimate partner violence, that there is help out there. And that's it for me. Thank you.
So thank you so much for that. And Councilmember Davis.
Yes, I just want to encourage everyone to help your neighbors. Call people, look in on people, offer to help people. When people feel shut in and isolated, it can lead to depression. And it's very important that we reach out and let other people know that we care about them.
Thank you for that. And Mr. Collins, our city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just pulling up the video here. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to all the staff, the city, all the volunteers for their tremendous effort in responding to the public health crisis we're dealing with. Frontline employees who are keeping our community clean, who are responding to calls for service, who are assisting, you know, our most vulnerable populations, or putting out information almost on a daily basis to help do our best to keep our community informed and also participating in the discussions, as the mayor mentioned, about an eventual reopening only after the governor of California has lifted the order, a shelter-home order. And thank you for the community for bearing with us as we venture into this new platform for providing public transparency in meetings on a Zoom online world. You know, we've sort of been learning as we go, as a lot of cities, and we've been providing a lot of great input from those who are watching at home, who have been calling in. So we appreciate that. And I really want to thank AGP and our city clerk's office for rolling with that, those changes and making modifications on the fly so that we can continue to provide these meetings to the community and have engagement and help our council members make good decisions. And I also want to thank council and also for our staff who've taken concessions on their pay to help us weather this financial storm, an economic storm, you know, as we try to recover from, on a long path to recovery, I should say. So thanks again for taking those concessions. It means a lot to all of us in our community. Lastly, I wanted to just acknowledge that there was an uptick, a pretty significant uptick in visitors to the coastline across the county and in Morro Bay in particular. Sort of a natural consequence of the mixed messaging we're hearing at the national level about whether we're in a pandemic lockdown or for reopening, and every, which way in between. So I know it's confusing for everybody. We have Morro Bay residents seeking, you know, refugee air beaches, Slow County residents, as well as those outside of our county coming here. And as the shelter-at-home order is pretty clear, and maybe we just need to say it over and over again, this is not the time to travel outside of your home and jurisdiction, except for essential purposes. It does not include vacationing and recreating outside of your community. So we're going to say it again loud and clear. We've also sent a letter to our lodging partners in Morro Bay that they shall not be catering to visitors who are here to vacation and recreate. Their home, their rental lodging spaces are meant for essential workers. They're meant for people who are assisting their family members here, and those who are of low economic means. That's, when you read the order, it's pretty clear. So we understand that our hoteliers and vacation rental owners are in dire straits economically. And when people are in town, you want to cater to them. That's your business model, but it's just not the right time for that. And so we've made sure they understand that we will be following up with voluntary compliance first and seeking enforcement efforts if necessary after that. Same goes for social distancing on our beaches. While we did have a lot of folks here, a lot of people were social distancing, and where they weren't, where we had patrol officers available, they were, you know, seeking compliance voluntarily. We haven't had to issue citations, thankfully. But I know there are folks who live on other parts of the town who didn't see that occurring. And so we're looking at our, sort of our staffing model as best we can to address those harder areas to make sure we have a presence. But again, we are relying on people doing the right thing. There are only a couple of our police officers on staff at one time. So we do need the voluntary compliance, like we've been getting from our community, but especially from those out of town, do not come here right now. So with that, that's all I have to offer from the staff side. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. And presentation? Is, let's see, Rochelle on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Hi Rochelle, can you hear me okay? Rochelle, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can now. Can you hear me?
You're not someone who's hearing this right again.
Okay, this is, normally we would be at City Hall welcoming you up to the podium, but unfortunately, or fortunately, we're at home. And so thank you for joining us. We appreciate you being here. Rochelle Bali, did I say it right? Bali? Great, is with us. And Rochelle is with the Community Action Partnership of Slow County, or CAPSLOW. And we have a proclamation for you, from the city council. I'm going to read it to you. I'd again love to be there to present it to you with social distancing directly, but let me go ahead and read it to you. It says, "Whereas the Morro Bay City Council recognizes that every moment in a child's life is an opportunity for that child to learn, that the quality of these experiences may determine whether a child succeeds in school and in life, and that all children need caring and loving adults in their lives. And whereas April, Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, marks the time to recognize that our community's children are precious assets, that the quality of their early years is our collective responsibility, and that we commit ourselves to ensuring that each and every child experiences a high-quality early environment at home, at childcare, at school, and in the community that will promote their optimal development. And whereas a variety of other events honoring Month of the Child will provide an opportunity to acknowledge the dedication of individuals and organizations to improve the lives of children and youth in our community, counting and raise the awareness of our community employers and elected officials of the need to improve the quality, availability, and accessibility of programs supporting children. And whereas Friday, April 30th, 2020, will commemorate Child Care Awareness Day as an honor, as an honor of the We Are the Care initiative to bring awareness and advocate for the local childcare crisis. Through this initiative, we as a community of partners envision a San Luis Obispo County where all families can find and afford quality care for their children, and where childcare professionals are valued for their critical role in building a solid foundation for our children and families to thrive in this world. Whereas Friday, April 24th, 2020, our county will participate in a statewide raising of the children's memorial flag to honor and raise awareness about the many children in our midst who suffer daily from abuse and neglect, and pledge our support for strategies that strengthen families and protect our young ones. And whereas, in this caring and connected county, we will, including and beyond the Month of the Child, continue to dedicate our efforts and our resources to investing in our community's future by investing in and supporting our community's children and youth. Now therefore be resolved, the Morro Bay City Council is proclaiming April 2020 as the Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, and April 30th, 2020, as Child Care Awareness Day. Thank you so much. And would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, first of all, for proclaiming April as Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, and for all of your support throughout the year. Just in terms of being able to support our children and childcare, and right now, it's a crazy time, as you guys know, being able to figure out what it is and how we help support our children and how we make sure families are supported through all of this. So I want to say thank you for all that you have done and are doing, and just letting you guys know and reminding you again. We'll send out some more information too to everyone. But Thursday, April 30th, is going to be our Child Care Awareness Day. It'll be a social media campaign where we're asking people to put, I have a sticker on the back of my, of my screen here, but we'll ask you to promote that on social media and just explain what childcare means to you from any different perspective. And we're hoping that it'll help a lot of people in realizing, we have a lot of parents that are realizing the importance of childcare now as they're figuring out what they're going to do with their children and having to work from home while taking care of them. I'm one of those people as well, and learning that double duty. But we just want to make sure that we are helping to promote, and I want to let you guys know of the resources that we're providing through the Child Care Planning Council in partnership with Community Action Partnership, and first five to be able to provide sanitation materials to all of the licensed providers in our county, as well as program materials that they might not be able to get, and then helping all of our programs to figure out how we can safely take care of our children because childcare has been deemed as one of the essential businesses to stay open. But it's, I'm sure you guys know, you can't really do social distancing with toddlers and figure out what that looks like. So we're working really hard to be able to support providers in making sure that they're staying healthy and safe while still taking care of our children and taking care of the children of our essential workers as well. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
And thank you so much for being here. We very much appreciate it. And again, thank you for all of your work and everything that you're doing for our community and county. Thank you. With that, I will move to public comment. Pursuant to Section 3 of the Executive Order N. 2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020, this meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on Cable Channel 20 and streamed to the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for the meeting. Community members are encouraged to submit agenda correspondence prior to the meeting. However, members of the public may watch the meeting either on Cable Channel 20 or as streamed live on the city website, or you may watch the meeting and speak during general public comment on a specific agenda item by logging into the Zoom webinar using the information provided in the agenda page. So with that, this is a general public comment for items either on the agenda or not on the agenda. And I will open it up and ask AGP, do we have anybody on the line?
Yes, sir. We have one person with their hand up. There are a number of callers. I see some hands going up. Please remember, if you're calling in on a phone, you have to press star nine to raise your hand. Ms. Winholz?
Betty, are you there? Looks like she's muted.
She's unmuted on my.
Can't hear me.
Okay, can you hear me? Betty? Yeah, I have her unmuted, and I'm not sure why she's not coming through.
Okay, you want to go to the next caller, and we'll see if we can get her back?
All right. All right, next caller is? Harrison?
Hello? Can you hear me?
I think he's referring to me, Charice Hanson.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, Charice. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having this opportunity for us to come and watch and speak to you. I wanted to talk on two subjects. One was in regards to something that's not on the topic tonight, but something that you guys are going to be looking into for the months to come, and that is percentage rent during the pandemic. And I wanted to say, put in my two cents. I believe that what we've been seeing with all the PPPs and the money going directly to the, to the people who need it most, the most beneficial way to the city is to give reductions directly to the small businesses. One of the things that's unique about the Tidlins Trust is the percentage. So I'm not going to go into that because I know what you know that I'm talking about. As far as the small businesses down there, many of us are completely closed with zero income and with very high bills that will not go away. A lot of them are being deferred, and we appreciate. A lot of them are being deferred, and we appreciate that greatly. Um, but that still means that with no income, uh, for multiple months, it might take years to get back into the black. Um, as far as the PPP and the stimulus checks that went out, I know no one who's actually told me that they've received any, either one of those on the Embarcadero, I hope that there's more, and I just haven't found them. Um, and I've asked many, and the resounding response is, I'm in the line and I'm hoping to receive those. So I feel that in order to not lose half or more of our Tidlins Trust subtenants, um, is to help them see the light at the end of the tunnel, and one of those ways is to have a reduction in their percentage rent, and as they have no business right now, it's going to be zero. But once we get up and running again, it's going to be a slow process, and every little bit helps. And I know that everybody down there has different percentage rents, and if we could just do across the board a 33% reduction of their current rate, it would greatly benefit the businesses, get back onto their feet, and hopefully encourage some of the businesses that are thinking about just closing their doors and not reopening, um, to, to stay the course. Uh, one of the things that happened to me as a small business on the Embarcadero is one business closed next door to me, and the, the financial, uh, deficit that was left because it just left a, a weird feeling on the property, um, is that it really affected the one open business that was on there. So I would hate to see one open business, one closed, one open, one closed, and the people who are really trying to do it, um, and make it work through this, uh, would suffer greatly if we lost a huge percentage of our, um, small businesses on the Embarcadero. Um, I think it will help give hope and spread the word that Morro Bay cares about the businesses, especially the ones that are working really hard, and help Morro Bay, Morro Bay's economy function. So it would be a great move in this, in the right direction to make sure that we keep the people that we have and recuperate quicker than.
Mr. Mayor, three minutes is up.
Okay.
Thank you, Charisse, very much appreciated. AGP, do we have our next caller? For public comment?
Betty Winholtz, are you there?
Hello, Betty?
Ms. Winholtz?
Betty, can you hear me?
No.
Perhaps our next caller, and we'll try again.
Mr. Hill?
Hi, everybody, Phil Hill.
Hey, Phil, welcome.
Hi, thanks. Um, I just want to say again, I appreciate, uh, how hard this job is for you, especially at this time, and I do appreciate the time you guys invest doing this, and I'd like to echo what Mr. Heller said, I work in the mental health field, and we all, and I need to do this myself as well, we all need to practice some self-care at this time on a regular basis. The reason I'm here again is talking about that proposed livable board fee increase, and I want you to understand that there are other people, I listed in the, in the, uh, rather excited misses I, I gave to you, the mayor and to you city council people, um, that there are other people that will verify this, um, the way that was handled, mishandled, and, um, the lack of transparency and cooperation that we experienced, it's all real. When I asked specifically about, um, vessel assists, accounts, any kind of documentation, um, tracking down fuel spills, paddlers assist, stand-up paddles and all that, we were told by each one, I asked those questions, do you keep any records? They said, no, we don't keep any at all. I later talked to, um, harbor crew, both retired and current, and they all told me the same thing, they have logbooks, and that's all in there. And my understanding is that's public record, and to tell us that there are no records, and then to leave it hanging like that, I think is an injustice, and I think that's very upsetting. I don't like being in this position to make these statements, but I can't just brush it under the carpet. So again, I hope that you can meet with Mr. Endersby and get him to see some reason about spreading out this increase over the entire community that are using the services. I have never once used these services, none, neither has Drew and Denise Jacobson, they've been there almost as long as me, neither has my ex-girlfriend, he's been there almost four years, the other guy at the end of the dock, he's, hasn't, he called once, but he didn't get any services. So the amount of services that we have seen supplied are very, very low, and I know you got a lot to deal with, so I'm just going to leave it at that, thank you again.
Thank you, Phil, appreciate your comments. Um, AGP, next caller?
Caller 7327, please?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, this is Dan Sedley from Morro Bay.
Welcome, Dan.
Thank, thank you, sir. First of all, I, I extend, extend my concern for, for yourself, Mayor, and, and all of the council, that you're able to stay well and healthy during this, during this pandemic, and, and that, I extend that to the staff as well. Uh, next, next of all, I would like to, uh, focus on this past weekend, it's, it's been, it's been under-exaggerated in my estimation as a slight increase of activity along the beaches and, and, and all over our town. I, I, to, I, when, when I had business, essential business I had to take care of, I saw traffic as bad as any summer vacation day I have ever seen in our town and on our beaches. It, and, and even worse than that, on social media, there's people that are rebellious, that, it, it's, it's like, it's like repeat, it's like they're against prohibition and they're out, they're going to a speakeasy and say, I'll be damned if I'm gonna, uh, acknowledge shelter at homes. And without a deterrent of, of, of getting a ticket or, or anything, th- they, they seemed content, at least on social media, they said, I'm going to do whatever I want, whatever I want and how I want to do it. Uh, obviously, they're not going to say that probably in front of a police officer, but we've also heard in, in earlier meetings, that we don't have the police force really to, to be in, in a ticket-giving mode, so I'm interested in your comments ab- about that and how we can do with that. Further in that regard, I support Assemblyman Cunningham's letter to the governor petitioning a reopening process, uh, that our, that our county, um, would, would, would provide, and that the governor would allow such a thing to happen. I, I, I support his urgings to, to reopen incrementally, but, but, but provided by our county and not necessarily under the thumb of the state. Um, unrelated subject, I'm, I'm interested to know at current time, what it, what is the cost of the WRF is? Has it, has it exceeded $126 million? Quite, that's just a question. The, the next is, is an elephant in the room that I've brought up many times, and that is the deep well infusion test. Since, since the WRF project is exempt from the COVID-19, what, what is the progress on the deep well infusion test? There are no longer easement problems that I know of, so I, I, I wish to, I wish, I wish to know that, that those tests are completed and that recycling works or that it doesn't. That, that's my question. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dan, appreciate that. Um, AGP, our next public comment?
Mr. O'Brien?
Welcome, Mr. O'Brien. Jeremiah, can you hear me?
Okay.
Welcome.
Yeah, uh, Jeremiah O'Brien, yeah. Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council and city staff, um, I had to step away, so I missed any comment, uh, that was made upon the disposition of the $250,000 from Castle Wind. And, Mr. Mayor, please feel free to interrupt me, uh, if, uh, I have misunderstood or something in that order, uh, but I, I just wanted to say, I did talk to Eric Endersby today, and I've talked to Tom Hafer, uh, and it seems like the, the, uh, uh, the disposition of that funding has changed from what we had anticipated the city was going to do, and we certainly recognize that fact because of the situation we are currently in, uh, and all of the difficulties related to that. So, uh, in discussion with Eric, uh, we, was mentioned these micro loans or so forth to those who have been severely affected, and that those loans would be paid back, and we certainly recognize that, uh, this is, uh, an issue when there's many people needy, and it's a wonderful idea that we're able to hopefully, uh, relieve some of their burden. Eric did indicate that money was a loan, it would be paid back, and we are hoping that that will go to what we had originally, the, the payback will go to what we had originally thought, and that was the work on the T-Piers and one of the other, uh, docks. Uh, one of the big reasons that we do hope for that, money being returned to its original destination, a- as this blows over and the loans get paid back in the future, is because we are, uh, we are using that as in-kind money on a grant that we're hoping to get for the waterfront. But that being said, in the meantime, uh, assisting our neighbors at a time like this is something that I believe we have to do, uh, and that, that goes for the whole, the whole country for that matter, but, uh, so, so that, that was the, uh, that was what we were hoping for, that is, like I said, this money gets paid back, then it goes towards its original, uh, destination as we knew it, and I'm hoping that Eric perhaps will reiterate, uh, our conversation from earlier today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremiah, um, next, uh, public comment? AGP, Betty, can you hear me, Betty?
Um, I can hear you, can you hear me this time?
We can hear you, great, thank you, welcome.
Thank you for your persistence, thank you.
Sure, sure.
This is Betty Winholtz, I wanted to, uh, talk about the draft statement of basis for the power plant, and, um, I had talked to someone at that Department of Toxic Substances, and they explained to me that what is going on is that PG&E has, uh, presented what they want to do, which is the very minimum, and just bring it up to, uh, you know, a commercial, uh, stance, and that's it. And the only thing that really influences that isn't necessarily the public's desire to see other items down there and make best use of visitor serving, if that would fit along with whatever else, um, the owner might be, uh, thinking about, but that it would be, um, the city and/or Coastal Commission saying to, uh, the Department of Sub- Toxic Substances that this really needs to be developed to a higher level because of our needs as a city. And so I want to encourage the city, who I think has kind of had a hands-off, uh, attitude about this right now because of other issues, but the deadline has been extended to May 22, and I'm hoping that you would agendize this item and, um, consider a statement to, uh, Toxic Substance about what the city would need to have happen on this property other than just commercial. The wind item is down the road that would take up part of the property, but there, as you know, is over 100 acres and has the possibility of other, um, things going on. So my encouragement is to ask you to agendize this item, thank you.
Thank you, Betty, appreciate that. Um, next public comment?
Melanie?
Melanie, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Melanie.
Okay, hi, um, I have to say, I, I'm really proud of our city for doing so well, we're quarantining and we're keeping the city safe, and I'm a little concerned though about, um, you know, what's going on in our beaches and in our stores, and, um, I'm seeing a lot of people from other places that don't live here, and they are not socially distancing, they're not wearing masks, gloves, and I hate to say it, but today I was on, um, Quintana and Main Street, uh, I was driving through town, I was really surprised to see how many people were at the rock and on the beach, um, parking was overflowing, not a mask in sight, no social distancing. I had my window open and my mask on, when I went to make a turn, the truck driver next to me, about five feet from my open window, coughed at me and laughed. I mean, we have to enforce these rules that we have in place, if all the people going to the beach were monitored, it wouldn't matter what message is coming from Washington, DC. I've asked repeatedly for supervision, supervision and signage and accountability, and the closers, our park is averaging 20 to 30-plus cars a day. A sign says locals only, but it's on the side of the lot entrances and is not monitored at all. The citizens here are doing well despite the tourists, but the city should take this seriously. How many citations were written last Friday and Saturday? And I would like an answer to that question, if it's possible. Um, this is not the time to cut police pay, to save $105,000, we need the Morro Bay Police Department now more than ever. This is not the time to put any strain on our police department. Aren't we down two or three already? I'm not sure. Hire for the open spots, this crisis is far from over, and we're going to need all the help that they can give us, please. It's like, I just feel like we're, you know, we're Disneyland and nobody cares, and I'm not feeling a lot of love from, you know, our city right now. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Melanie, um, next public comment?
I think that's all the public comments.
Okay, thank you, AGP, Zeke, I appreciate it. With that, um, I will close public comment and ask for, um, a couple of responses first, um, regarding, um, just a, a theme, again, Mr. Collins, I know you opened up with, um, a statement, and maybe Chief Cox and/or, um, uh, Mr. Endersby could offer their perspective as well, uh, regarding enforcement, um, what we're doing with regards to tourists.
Not a mask in sight.
Getting a nut, Melanie? Melanie? Uh, you need, there we go, sorry, I was getting background noise. Anyway, Mr. Collins and Chief Cox?
Okay, now we got, we got, yeah, we got a mute there, thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Uh, I know it's confusing to, to stay on top of, uh, all the buttons, so, um, and thank you for the good comments. Um, obviously, uh, the city didn't, um, ask for COVID to come here, uh, we certainly aren't responsible for the shelter-at-home order, uh, but we do take it very seriously to do our best to enforce it. Uh, council has passed an urgency ordinance, um, a couple of meetings ago, that effectively immediately allowed us to enforce upon the shelter-at-home order established by the state and the county. Uh, we've received numerous phone calls to our code enforcement officer, we have one left in the city at this time, um, who is sort of handling the vacation rental, hotel, and business questions that we're getting from our community members. We have two to three police officers that are available at any one given time, uh, to patrol the entire city and respond to regular falls for service, plus those that we're getting from residents concerned about gatherings and other kinds of social distancing violations. We can't be everywhere at once, we do require compliance, voluntary compliance, and I believe our, as, as the caller mentioned, our, our residents are doing a pretty darn good job with that, um, but we have seen lapses, and where we see them, we have to see them to be able to enforce on them, and we, as a city, are being told and we are directed from, from the values that we have, is that warnings are issued before $1,000 fines are issued, because that's what we can, you know, offer right now. So we are getting voluntary compliance when we see the issues, our police officers are taking it very seriously and getting out there and, and, and taking action where they see the issues. Um, we've done efforts like closing the Morro Bay Rock, which we believe is, is suppressed the amount of visitors who are going to come here because that message has gotten out there. There are still people choosing to come here, and there isn't anything we can do about it, we cannot ID people as they enter the city. Uh, that's not who we are as people, and nor could we enforce it anyhow, so it, we're sort of in this middle ground of, of trying to do our best. Um, competing messages are sending conflicting messages to folks that maybe it's okay to travel to Slow County and go to the beaches. Um, this is where they travel to all the time in the summer, so this is a well-worn path for them, so they come here. So we are doing our absolute best to manage that, we are going to look at different staffing models and signage where we can, uh, the entire county experienced that inundation, but the Cayucus, Pismo, and other parts of, of the counties, we all were talking about that as city managers just yesterday, about how, how better, how better to respond. We also issued letters to our vacation rental owners and hotel owners that now is not the time to receive visitors here, who are here to recreate and vacation, this is absolutely inappropriate. So we are sending that letter that we can enforce upon, uh, if they, that activity continues. So, um, just to summarize, we take it very seriously, I hear what Melanie's saying, we're going to continue to do the best we can. We're going to continue to do the best we can. We really believe our residents are doing their best to comply. It's just a matter of calling in if you see issues to our police department. Jody could probably elaborate a little bit more on that. Thank you.
Chief, did you want to comment?
I'll just reiterate what City Manager, Mr. Collins, has said, and it's accurate. We're working closely with our Harvard Department, our allied agency partners, really the message of not only education but voluntary compliance. We are starting to step up. We have issued some citations related to the parking and other issues. We've been doing that nearly every day to address those issues. As we've continued to get the message out there, you know, it may come to the point that we really need to start issuing some of these $1,000 citations. But as you know, our Muni Code does require that we issue warnings first, and that's the route that we've been taking. And when the officers make contact, we keep a log of all of those warnings that have been issued. And if we come across that party a second time, then they'll be subject to the $1,000 citation. And that, that's what we've been doing on the enforcement side.
Thank you, Chief. And would you remind maybe community members how they should handle issues where they feel inappropriate social distancing and/or issues regarding violation of the ordinance occur? Whom should they call first and?
Absolutely. They should, they should contact the police department. If it's a violation that they believe is related to a vacation rental, something of that sort, they can contact our code enforcement office at 805-772-2223. If it's a social distancing violation that's out in the public, they can contact the police department at our dispatch line of 772-6225. And I'd also like to remind folks, I hear several of them commenting about the masks. The masks are a recommendation, they're a suggestion. There is no mandatory requirement for people to be required to wear a mask. We encourage it, we recommend it, but we cannot cite somebody for not wearing a mask. And we get those calls almost daily from, from community members. So we are, again, the messaging and education is encouraging and recommending that people not only utilize the masks when they're in public, but that they then also adhere to the social and physical distancing guidelines that, that will be enforceable.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that very much. With that, also, if Mr. Leibig or Mr. Gassaris are here, Mr. Sedley's question, I think I can answer it. We have not exceeded the $126 million budget on the WRF spending to date, nor has the budget exceeded that. Am I correct, Mr. Collins or Mr. Leibig?
I think, City Engineer, edit, correct? We're at about 125,1 in our budget estimates for the project. And so we have not exceeded the 126 million.
And the deep well infusion question that he had regarding tests? He said we acquired the easements. We have not acquired the easements yet, so I assume the tests have not been done. You want to comment on that, Mr. Leibig?
Sure. I think we have our terminology a little wrong. Deep well infusion is not what we're doing there. We're doing indirect potable reuse through groundwater recharge. Those are fairly shallow aquifers there that we're, will be injecting water into. And I just brought up the schedule, so maybe I can give everybody an idea for when that portion of the project will be complete. Also want to remind folks, GSI's work, the groundwater consultant we have on board has already proven feasibility. The phase they're in right now is injection testing for design of the, and number of wells. And that testing, that pilot injection testing is scheduled for early this summer.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate that update. And let's see, if I could ask Mr. Collins, at the last meeting regarding Ms. Winholz's questions for DTSP and input, you gave a, an explanation. Could you reiterate that for us this evening? The process and what's going on?
That time I, so make sure I'm off mute here, yeah. Mentioned that, you know, the DTSC just sort of controls the transparency mechanism to know what, what is out there and that they sort of control the keys to what is allowed given the level of contamination or types of contamination. And she's correct in that. They're basically just reiterating that it would be industrial use based on the work that will be done. They're not seeking to expand the use, which would require cleanup of the site to take it to a higher, better use, I guess, above, above industrial. The comments I made at the last council meeting was that from the DTSC perspective, and our staff had reached out to them, that this, this work does not affect the WRF project, nor does the WRF project affect this, this project that DTS is doing. With regard to the potential greater use of that facility, you know, unlike the Diablo Power Plant closure, Nuclear Power Plant closure, which has a legislation that was passed to help provide financial assistance to not only PG&E, but the surrounding cities and school districts and whatnot, there was no such measure put in place for the power plant closure here. The option that we have, however, is the agreement which was made with Duke Energy and carries forward with Vistra, which is a $1 option, which means that property becomes ours, you know, less than 15 years if that power plant is not taken down and contamination addressed. So that is our major leverage with Vistra to take that up to a better use. And if they can't do it, then it becomes our property. And of course, we would be able to apply for, for brownfields and other kinds of grants to address it on our own. Obviously, we'd like to see the private sector take care of it and not make it a burden for our community. So that, that action to submit on the WRF is not, does not require formal council action. It's just a reporting of what is. But certainly, if council is interested in agendizing, we'd be happy to prepare something for council.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. And lastly, regarding Jeremiah O'Brien's question regarding what may have happened with the Castle $250,000 original plan and might report on, it wasn't an action, but what recommendation was made by the council majority at our last meeting study session on the finances and the disposition of those funds? Or Eric, if you'd like to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take it. Your council looked at a quite a wider range of things at the three o'clock special meeting. As Mr. O'Brien mentioned, what, what council's looking for is a little bit more development of a potential loan program, which could use those funds, the Castle Wind Funds, which had been programmed by council earlier this year for much-needed infrastructure improvement that was, was referenced by, by the caller. So, you know, we, we believe this loan program would be able to fulfill those, I guess, future needs by, you know, replenishing the funds and then being able to apply those to those projects that are much needed. But as, as mentioned, we have some more pressing needs at this time. So I think we'd be able to fulfill that commitment down the line.
Okay, thank you for that. I think that takes care of all the questions. With that, I will move us to the consent agenda. Go ahead and open up public comment for consent agenda items only. Any callers, AGP, for consent agenda?
Winholz?
Okay, Betty?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
I want to address item A3, which is, has to do with the accepting of the state Coastal Conservancy grant money, or at least being willing for the trust of public funds to accept that for us. And I want to express a concern, and that is that the baseline study, which has been done, that evaluates the environmental basis of the property right now, has not been seen by the public, and I'm, I'm assuming it hasn't been seen by you either. And the reason that raises a concern for me is that when the Coastal Conservancy gave a grant to Audubon in Los Osos for Sweet Springs East, it was specifically to preserve Morro Shilter Band snail habitat. In spite of the fact Audubon is supporting birds and birds eat snails. So there was a bit of a contradiction that happened there, and it put them in a kind of a curmudgeon of how they were going to balance those two items. But they wanted the money bad enough that they took that. So my concern is whether or not at some point that the dogs, as they did with state parks, get kicked off the beach, because it's a, one of the things they say in their grant is that they're concerned about the wildlife habitat that's currently there, and whether state parks would want to extend the snowy plover, a reserved area up to Dog Beach. And I would think that the city's not interested in that, but I want to make sure there's not that conflict that Audubon experienced when we accept this, this land.
The Morro Bay Open Space Lines is happy to announce a successful conclusion to a fundraising campaign to preserve the Rock.
So my question then is, do we know or do we need to look at that document first? Or do we already know that there's not going to be a conflict with regard to that? And then the second part of that, which I mentioned to you in an email, was that even though we're not talking about the MOU tonight, I thought there was a couple of contradictory sentences in there in terms of what is expected of the city. And I hope that you, City Council, as well as staff, will look at that and see if that can be unconflicted. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Appreciate that. AGP, next caller?
Nobody else is on the line or with their hands up?
All right. Thank you. With that, I will close.
Just a moment, somebody just raised their hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure. I'll reopen it. Hello?
Caller?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. This is Dan Dudley from Morro Bay.
Hi, Dan, welcome.
Thank you, sir. In regards to A3, I have two concerns. And if, if Morro Bay is going to be involved in, in a three-way exchange of monies, as I vaguely understand it, and agreements, a little bit take, take off of Betty's comments, can we absolutely ensure that it remain a dog beach and that it not be taken away by conservationist concerns? And, and, and two, I wish to be, I wish to know if there's going to be any expense to the city in being a part of this deal. Those are my two questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that. AGP, any other callers?
Yes, Tom?
Tom, welcome. Tom, are you there?
Tom Heifer?
Tom, are you there? Might be muted.
I'm trying to unmute him.
Tom?
No, I'm having trouble with his. I'll go to the next one and then try back.
Okay.
Clint?
Clint?
You know, I'm having trouble. Dana, could you try it from your end?
Yes, I will unmute. Tom Heifer?
Tom, are you there?
And I agree with AGP, it is, that function is not working.
I see the number coming up on the screen. Tom?
Let me try. Mr. Kent disconnected from the meeting?
You know, I just put him in the panelist. All right. Mr. Kent?
This is Craig Kent. Can you hear me? Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Mr. Kent, go ahead. We can hear you. Welcome. I just wanted to highlight that I did send in an email for you. I hope that each of you get a chance to read it. It's with respect to item B1 and one of the fees in the fee schedule, specifically the Live Board Administration Fee.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, we're on the consent agenda, items A1 through A6.
I beg your pardon. I thought B1 was part of that.
Sorry, yeah. Certainly welcome to call back when we get to B1. Be happy to have your public comment then.
Thank you.
I'm muted. Thank you, sir. AGP, any, anybody else that we've got?
Let me try to move another one to panelists, see if we can get it.
Thank you. Hello? Hello, anybody there?
I'm not seeming to be able to get them to come on.
Okay, if, if we get somebody that would like to call back regarding the consent agenda, please interrupt me and I'll be happy to allow them to speak. Zeke, thank you.
Thank you.
For now, I'll close public comment. Sorry for the technical difficulties, folks. New technology, difficult at times, but thank you for bearing with us. With that, hello?
This is Craig Kent. May I make a comment? I tried to call in by phone and I got a message that all circuits were busy. So if people are attempting to communicate by phone, they may not be able to.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay, so public comment is closed. I'll bring it back to council. I'll either entertain a motion for approval of consent items, or if anybody would like to pull any, please, please say so now.
I'd love to approve all of the consent items.
So I have, okay, hold on. I have a motion by council member Addis to approve all consent items. And I'll wait for a second on that first. Okay, hearing no second, I think that's going to fail because of the questions regarding A3. Are you second on that? Thank you.
A second.
So, okay, so we have a motion to approve all consent items, A1 through A6. And let's see, that's motion by council member Addis, second by council member Heller. And any discussion?
I would like to pull A3.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
I, I would, I would also just like to make a correction to A4. I, I don't need to pull it, but I do need to make a correction.
Okay.
Should I amend my, can I amend my motion to approve?
You can do that.
I'll amend my motion and hopefully I can get a friendly second to approve A1, 2, 4, 5 and 6.
A second.
Okay, so again, council member McPherson had mentioned potentially A4 and a small correction, but the motion.
Yeah, make that correction right now so we can.
Let me, I'm going to move with the motion on the table. So motion to approve A1, 2, 4, 5 and 6 by council member Addis, second by council member Heller. And then again, council member McPherson, your discussion?
Yes, I just want to point out that the scale Yes, I just want to point out that the scale that was presented in the city manager evaluation process is incorrect. The council uses a three-point scale, not a five-point scale, with five being exceed standards, three being meet standards, and one being needs improvement. And I just wanted to make sure that we have, we have that understanding that that's what the form contains that we use.
Council member Addis, would you like to amend your motion to pull potentially another item?
To pull A4?
Yeah, I need a formal pull to be able to change that. Thank you.
Let's do A1, 2. I'd like to move to approve A1, 2, 5, and 6.
Council member Heller, are you okay with that? Thank you. So motion by council member Addis, second by council member Heller to approve A1, 2, 4, excuse me, A1, 2, 5, and 6. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Council member Addis?
Yes.
Council member Heller?
Yes.
Council member Davis?
Yes.
Council member McPherson?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes. Thank you for that. And A3, we could pull that. Let's see, that was pulled by council member Addis, I assume in reference to the questions that were asked?
Yes. Let's get Red's questions.
Okay, so with regard to A3, council member Davis, would you like to add anything to the comments that were made during public comment before we address those?
No, my purpose in pulling it was just to clarify for the public exactly what properties we are talking about and what the end result will be.
Thank you so much. With that, I will ask Mr. Graham or Mr. Livek or Mr. Collins, whoever would be most qualified, to address the issues concerning the baseline study, which quote unquote has not been seen by the public or council. And the concern also by Mr. Sedley and Ms. Winholtz about the potential for dogs being kicked off of the beach because of either snowy plover or other issues similar to what happened to an example that Ms. Winholtz gave. So, and then any costs associated with this action. Mr. Graham, did you want to take that?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Mayor. Thank you. So those are good questions. The baseline study, we only have it in draft at this point. And it is more of an inventory of what's on the property. It doesn't, you know, give any indication as to what we're supposed to do with it. In fact, we're supposed to come up with a management plan, you know, after we acquire the property, that says what we're going to do with it. The management plan would, would be something that's fairly straightforward because this would be a passive use area, you know, similar to how it's being used now. So it'd be pretty short. And in talking with the Coastal Conservancy, they had indicated that it would be pretty simple and something staff could prepare. So back to the other item that you referenced is what is the cost? It would be the cost of the staff time to prepare the management plan for this area. You know, as to the concern that was raised about turning this into snowy plover habitat or whatnot, you know, land use would fall to the city once the city, what's the property is owned and annexed into the city. The southern portion of the Dog Beach lots is within the city's boundary, but the northern lot is not. And so we would need to annex that northern lot. It's in the city's sphere of influence, but not in, it's within the city limit to be annexing that. There's a gap between these two properties and the approximate location where you would enter the Chevron facility. And that gap is there because that is where the pipes go out into the ocean from the Chevron facility. And there is some contamination there that Chevron has to clean up before that property can convey. So you have the southern portion of Dog Beach and the northern portion of Dog Beach and then a piece in the middle that will not convey until some point in the future when Chevron cleans it up. And we'd have to have future discussions about acquiring that additional piece. And they're interested in divesting themselves of that piece of property as well, once it is cleaned. Was there anything else?
No, I think you got it all. Thank you. Appreciate that. With that, is there a motion to approve A3?
I'll move to approve A3.
Sorry, Ken. Motion by council member Addis to approve item A3 on the consent agenda, second by council member Heller. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Council member Addis?
Yes.
Council member Heller?
Yes.
Council member Davis?
Yes.
Council member McPherson?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes, and thank you for that. And A4, council member McPherson, would you like to suggest those changes?
I will just make a motion that we approve item A4 with the following correction, that the evaluation form that is presented should be a three-point scale, five equals exceed standards, three equals meet standards, and one equals needs improvement.
Thank you. That's consistent with the policy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion to approve A4 with changes by council member McPherson, seconded by council member Addis. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Council member McPherson?
Yes.
Council member Addis?
Yes.
Council member Davis?
Yes.
Council member Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes. Thank you. That concludes the consent agenda. That'll move us to item B1. This is a public hearing. Just as a reminder, council, we will start with the staff presentation regarding this item. Move to council questions. I will then open the public hearing, allow for public comment on the item, then close the hearing and have council debate and entertain a motion at that time. So with that, this is item B1, public hearing and adoption of resolution number 36-20, which rescinds resolution number 88-19 and amends and adopts the complete fiscal year 2020, 2021 master fee schedule. I'll turn it over to Ms. Callaway.
Thank you. Good evening. If you will recall, in September, we had a discussion on our master fees. And at that time, agreed to phase in our fees to reach a point of cost recovery for the majority of those fees. There's a few exceptions surrounding fees like recreation and a few others. So staff prepared a three, three-level phase-in with the first phase-in beginning January 1 of this year, the second phase-in for July 1 of this year, and the final phase-in for July 1 of next year. Obviously, since that time, the circumstances have changed with COVID-19. We understand the impacts that are happening in the business community and with our residents. And the fees apply across the spectrum. There's business and residential fees included in that fee schedule. So trying to reach a balance of what would work for the city, understanding the city, to the extent we aren't cost recovery, we'll have to make up the difference in those fees. And in recognizing the need for some relief in the community, we are recommending deferring the second phase-in at this time of the fees and increasing by, increasing the fees by CPI or ENR, Engineering News Record, depending on what fee they are. That's consistent with previous practices prior to completing the fee study. And is what the city had done for many years prior to the fee study update. So we kind of reverted back to that methodology, thinking it was a good, a good mix or a good balance perhaps between everybody's needs. CPI is 2.5% and the ENR was 5.36%. The ENR increases are for the engineering-related fees and everything else was primarily increased by CPI. There's a few we don't address at all, like copies, for example. And then outside of that, there are two that we are proposing to be increased beyond CPI. And that's because we'd really deferred any increase when we adopted in January to have further conversations. You've heard about one of those tonight. That would be the liveaboard fees. And the second being the slip, slip fees. We're recommending that they be increased more towards the cost recovery end and effective in October 1st. We felt like that gave a good length of time and notice to the users of those fees that they would be growing up in recognition of the economics that are happening right now. And so that, we did provide the updated fee schedule. It was posted on our website. And we also provided the 1920 fee schedule that had the phases. You could see and compare the differences if you wish to. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you so much, Jennifer. Appreciate that. With that, I will open it up for council member questions. Council member Davis, would you like to start us off, sir?
I do not have any questions. I'll have a statement later about the slip fees.
Thank you. Council member Heller, any questions?
Yes, I do have a couple. Jen, thank you for that update. Very succinct. And you have a great way of stating the complicated in a few words, and I really appreciate that. So my question is you, if the council wanted to modify this fee schedule rather than just postponing its implementation, would there be some way to modify some of the fees that might be able to incentivize the kind of growth or activity that we want in this community, like construction, for example?
The council can take direction or provide direction to staff and we can go back and look at the fees. Just understanding that to the extent that we supplement the fees beyond, you know, to not have the big cost recovery is an impact to, in many cases, the general fund and something that we would have to make up for on the opposite side. So for instance, a building permit fee, the staff time to complete that is built into that. To the extent we, we augment that or supplement that by reductions, somewhere else in the general fund is making up for that staff time because it still takes so many hours to complete that, that building inspection fee. But we, council can certainly give us direction and we can go back and modify any of the fees really.
Okay, and this may not be up your alley, but I'm going to ask you, what are your thoughts about how these fees is specifically related to developmental fees? How they could impact positively or negatively the revenues for the city in general, in terms of economic growth?
You know, we've had a few conversations around that. I tend to agree with our consultants and our community development director. I think he's on the, he's available and he could probably add into. Reduction of fees is, in my opinion, really more of a messaging versus an incentive. I think when you're looking at development, particularly commercial development, the fees are not as impactful in the scope of the whole project. And it's the cost to do, you know, the cost to do service and you kind of include that in the, in the calculation. However, I do understand the value of messaging in terms of trying to be business-friendly, or we are business-friendly and really encouraging that. So Scott, I don't know if you want to add in to that. It's a little bit more of your realm, I think, than mine.
I mean, I would, would mind adding a couple of comments there. I mean, in my experience in doing this for 20-something years, you know, when these items have been brought, the city's actually done this in the past and it didn't really spur on development to come in the front door. So you'd probably be looking at, I mean, if you're trying to send the message that Jen was talking about, that would be a dramatic cut in fees. And we haven't even seen instances in the past where that's actually made an effect on the amount of applications that we get in. Thankfully, we're still fairly busy. We have a lot of applications in planning pipeline and in the building pipeline as well. So activities remaining fairly steady. And it slowed down a little bit in the beginning of COVID, but is picking back up again. You know, it's difficult to say what impact it would have. I would say if we don't, going the direction that we're going now by not implementing the suggested change from the consultants to significantly increase the building permit fee is, I think, the correct thing to do. We don't want to disincentivize investment in the community. And, you know, taking a more moderate approach is sort of what, you know, we've tried to do, bringing this forward to you at this point. That was kind of the intent behind it, was not to get that big building fee, because it's a significant increase. But just more online with what others in the county are charging. So that's sort of our thought process leading up to today.
So there's no, there's no, in your, in your opinion, you don't think it would incentivize growth by implementing a fee increase that was scheduled for July 1st? You know what I mean? If you're developing, you know the fees are going to go up in two months substantially, you're going to jam your project in the, in the pipeline. Is that not something that?
We've had some folks, you know, you know, talk to us about that and bring things in prior to the previous fee increase. It wasn't dramatic. It was a couple of projects. It wasn't very many. We've had people ask about this as it relates to, you know, are we going to, what are we moving forward with? I mean, to some extent, working on that. But again, we sort of went with a more moderate approach because we didn't want to dramatically increase fees because that could be pursued as a disincentive. Right now, we have, if you want to look at it from the marketplace, we have a very competitive fee structure compared to those in our, at our market. That would be in San Luis Obispo County. We have very competitive fees.
Okay, those are, those are my questions. Jen, you go ahead. You want to say something?
No, I was just going to kind of clarify and reiterate that the large fee increases that we had previously talked about with respect to the large-scale commercial, we've deferred those as well. So they're consistent with what they were in the past. We aren't proposing any substantially larger fees. So just to clarify that.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member McPherson, any questions?
I have a couple. Thank you. First of all, I'm just curious to know what the timetable is for our seeing the developmental impact fees.
Our intention is to bring those back in September. That was partially why we deferred the liveaboard. And we picked the date of October for the liveaboard and the slip fees to kind of tie them all coming back together. That's our intention. We're still working on fleshing out a few of them and making sure we capture appropriate areas such as the harbor, that sort of things, if there's justification for that.
And then just to follow up, would either you or Eric like to explain the discussions you've had with the liveaboard people and the folks with slip fees? Because I know you've been meeting with them. And if you could just kind of summarize the discussions that have been going on and where you're at with that?
Sure. I participated in one conversation, group conversation with the liveaboard residents. So maybe Eric should start out because I know he's had a few more than that and I can add on if there's anything to do that.
Sure, I'd be glad to. So we, so as you know, we brought this harbor advisory board and the harbor advisory board with the slip fees and the liveaboard fees said, take a pause and let's work with those constituencies and see if we can, you know, minimize the impacts and make sure we're doing the right fee structure. We did that. A group of liveabords came forward, about half a dozen, had probably three, maybe four meetings with them after hours, usually like 5:00 to 7:00 PM or 6:00, 6:00, 7:00 PM. I was in each one. I had my harbor business coordinator, Laurie Stilts, in one, Becca Kelly, patrol supervisor in a couple. Jennifer came to one. In addition to those meetings, we had several emails, lots of emails go back and forth. And in addition to data that I provided the group, in emails. And through that process, you know, we identified their concerns and their input, factored in as best we could, their input. On the liveaboard fees, what we eventually ended up doing was adjusting some of our estimates on the staff time we, that it takes for us to manage the liveaboard program. We adjusted that down as far as we felt we justifiably could. And then spread the total costs of over 50 potential permits and brought it down to a one monthly fee for all liveabords. And I think provided input, again, from the group, back and forth through the whole process, and landed on a number that we thought reasonable, we thought justifiable, much like the the rental program, the vacation rental program, the cost to manage it and enforce it is spread across the permit fees. So unfortunately, I don't think all the folks in the group agreed with the bottom-line number. But we came up with the number we came up with, and that's what we're proposing tonight. On the slip fees, had a similar process. The number that, that Chu from RCS originally proposed had Chu from RCS originally proposed had, had factored in the capital costs on the standpoint of the dollars we need today as opposed to amortized over the life of those particular facilities. And when you did that, you came up with a daily per foot rate for those vessels in those slips of about twenty dollars. Our current rate is about fi- is five dollars and ten cents per foot per month. The initial proposed rate was close to twenty dollars per foot per month, mainly because of the capital cost being amortized over a relatively short period of time because, you know, we've got the B Street slips needing replacement now, but then Dune Street and Launch Ramp coming up not that far down the line. And so trying to put that money in the bank in a short period of time made those costs go really high. Well, we, through the process, working with the, the slip holders and the commercial fishermen, realized that really wasn't a fair way to, to structure the rates, punishing the past or punishing the, the present for things not done in the future in terms of having rates that were a little higher. And so we amortized the capital costs over a longer period of time. And when you came to a dollar number to per foot per month for the commercial slip rates, it came to about nine and a half dollars per foot per month, much more reasonable. And then you apply the city council's resolution from a few years ago of eighty, eighty-five percent cost recovery on the slip rates, came to about an eight dollar and fifteen cent per foot per month rate, which we went back to the fishermen and see and saw what we could, what they could support. They, of course, proposed, graciously proposed going after a cable committee grant, a couple hundred thousand dollars of the potential grant funding there to bring down the capital costs. And so when you take that eighty-five percent rate of eight dollars and sixteen cents per foot per month and do it over a phased period of time, they were okay with a seven dollar and ten cent per foot per month rate currently to be implemented come October and then see how they do with the grant and then look to next year's rates and see where we are and how they did with the grant and how the rate structure works.
So it sounds like you've really worked with them.
Yes, we worked very extensively and, you know, Jeremiah and Tom Hayford were the main folks in the commercial fishermen and then several liver boards and liver board group, couple of which had been involved over the decades, you know, that I've been in the department. When I came on, the liver board ordinance was relatively new and the program was relatively new and then, which was in ninety-three, about, no, in the late nineties, maybe ninety-eight, ninety-nine, maybe two thousand, we did some modifications to the liver board ordinance with some members of the liver board group, some of which were in the, the group of today, a couple of them, Phil Hill being one of them. And then I think in between then and now, we had another update on some of the parts of the liver board ordinance that again had, I think, Phil and some of the other folks involved. So yeah, we met quite extensively with them and emailed back and forth and provided them and was clear and transparent as we possibly could be with all the information and data.
Okay, thank you very much, Eric. My last question, is the city continuing to work on streamlining the permitting and planning, the permitting process, I guess? And I know that was a concern that I had about the, the original proposed increase in those fees. So I'm just wondering, we talked about wanting to streamline the process and I'm just wondering where we're at in that.
Yeah, that was identified as a, as a council goal and we started discussions with the chamber and then we ran into COVID nineteen and that, everything else has sort of been put on hold. In addition, at the same time, we, we have the reorganization of our public works department. So that's, those things are all sort of mixed together right now. You know, we'll have to see how our financial recovery goes. We may be, have less bodies available to assist us through some of the quote unquote non-essential or non-public safety functions of the city, so we have to be mindful of that and, and so we gotta be careful about what our expectations are about streamlining processes at this time.
Okay, well, I, I may not like the answer, but thank you for giving it.
Council member McPherson, I would add one thing to that. We are looking at ways to improve our service, even given the reduced staffing that we have and the reduced hours that we have. And what we're doing is, we weren't planning on doing this until about August, but we've taken the task on and are working on turning our city works, which is our permit processing application, public facing, so applications can be submitted on, can be submitted online. We've, we're, we're working on what that looks like. We've had a couple of different meetings internally to, to work that out and we're starting to phase it in with kind of the simple building permit type things and people are submitting for electrical and mechanical permits and things like that. So, so we are looking to, to do those types of things and that also reduces the amount of interaction you have to have with the public, you know, and so that's probably a good thing at this time and so one of the other reasons why we're looking at it, but, so we are doing some things to improve service.
Okay, tha- thank you, Scott, I appreciate it.
That's a Thank you, council member McPherson. Council member Addis, questions?
I don't ha- I don't really have any questions. Mine were answered extensively just now with the questions that the other council members asked. I appreciate that. Those were the things I was thinking about. How do we streamline the process? Do lower fees actually promote more business? And, you know, how did the slip fees come about? So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Eric, just a couple of questions to follow up on the liver board question for me. What was the last time, or when was the last time liver board fees were increased?
Oh, boy. Approximately, they've had, they've had, you know, the, the standard CPI kickers every year. I wanna say four or five years ago. That's a little bit of a guess. We, we, the last, the last time they're adjusted may have been when we, we separated that any subs- anything other than CPI were, there used to be one fee for, for liver board permit administration and inspection and we separated those two off because there's the option in the ordinance for liver boards to have an independent surveyor do the, the vessel safety and equipment inspection. And so liver boards didn't want to be charged that cost if they weren't having the harbor department do it and many of them weren't having us do it, so I think that was the last time and that was, that was at least probably half a dozen years ago, six, seven years ago.
And this proposed increase, can you give me the absolute dollar amount of the increase and what percent of the current rate will this increase incur?
Okay, that's gonna be a little more complicated, but I'll try. So currently, boy, currently the, the fees are, give me a second, open up my staff report, make sure I'm talking apples and apples here. So our current fees are for the permit, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. Administrative fee, biennial, meaning every two years. So every two years pay a hundred and sixty-five for the permit administration and then a hundred and fifty, again, biennial for the two-year cycle of the permit. A hundred and fifty dollars if you have us, the harbor department, do the inspection. If you're on a mooring, that isn't a Marina Square or Yacht Club mooring, meaning you don't get any type of services from the city, such as water, restrooms, other things, there's a seventeen dollar and forty cents service fee. If you're in a city slip, which really just means our city commercial fishing boat slips, which we typically not had a lot of liver boards, we've got one right now, or two right now. Most of the times we don't have any. It's a thirty-five dollar and eighty cent fee. When we went through the process of the fee analysis, RCS originally had proposed the fees based on that same sort of structure, permit fee and inspection fee and then service fees. One of the difficulties for us to determine was the honest utilities, electricity, water, wear and tear that liver boards may have on our facilities. And so what we did working through RCS was came up with our employee times that, that we put into the system, put into the program in terms of administrative employees, in other words, office stuff and managing the paperwork essentially. And then out on the water, the patrol staff and managing the liver boards. And that's everything from, you know, assisting liver boards with lost gifts or domestic issues or the pump out, you know, something going wrong with the sewage pump out, what the patrol staff time putting into was, and then the harbor patrol supervisor time and that. Through that process and through working with RCS, we came up with our employee costs and the overhead costs and the standard costs that apply. And then applied that number equally over fifty potential liver board permits. We currently have thirty-five approximately. We're allowed up to fifty and we took those total costs and spread them on an annual basis amongst fifty potential permits and those total costs amounted to forty-four dollars and eighty cents. And again, we didn't try to factor any utilities into it because we really couldn't justifiably find out what the utilities were. Just mainly employee costs and program and overhead costs, standard stuff that you, you put into the fee study. So forty-four dollars and eighty cents per month for every single liver board if we had fifty to spread the total cost among fifty potential liver boards. Knowing that we could potentially have fifty and run the lookout for fifty and that's what we've got to enforce upon if folks don't get permits. We've typically had, you know, eight to ten what we call sneak aboard, folks that refuse to get permits and we have to try and do enforcement action on. So there's always a, a group that we're spending time trying to enforce upon. And then the, the permit inspection fee being separate and remaining at a hundred and fifty dollars, which is what it was before, so. Functionally, what would occur from a dollar standpoint or a liver board would be if you're a liver board on a mooring, with the exception of a yacht club or Marina Square mooring, meaning most of the mornings in the bay, what you would see between your current fees that you're paying on a monthly basis versus the new fee would be about twenty dollars per month. If you're on a yacht club or Marina Square mooring or in a private slip, what you would see in the difference from what you'd be paying today to the new fees would be about thirty-seven dollars and change more in fees.
Okay.
Now, there's a lot of information
That's okay, yeah. That, that really helps try to understand the, the essence of what we're doing. Okay, and I don't know if you had any comparative benchmark. I know it's based upon our own costs, but do you have any comparative benchmark data for what other places charge, harbors charge?
I do, we have Santa Barbara, bless their heart, city Santa Barbara, harbor department does a fee analysis every year and they look at lots of different things and mostly slip fees, but they do lots of other boating fees and they compare basically from Santa Cruz on down the coast and they make that available to everybody. If you're a liver board in Santa Barbara, you're gonna be paying a hundred and fifty dollars per month for a liver board permit. If you're in Channel Islands Harbor, any one of four or five different marinas within that harbor, you're paying about three hundred and fifteen dollars per month. Or about half of your slip fees if you're in certain other marinas there. If you're in Long Beach, you're paying about a hundred and ninety dollars additional a month in addition to your regular slip fees. Monterey, you're paying fifty percent of whatever your slip fee is. Oceanside, it's based on a per foot per month, but for an average forty-foot boat, you're paying about a hundred and forty dollars per month. Santa Cruz, a hundred dollars per month per person. So Moro Bay by comparison is, even at these new rates is a relative bargain compared to everybody else on the coast.
Great, thank you so much for the detailed answer, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
With that, that's all the questions I had. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. With that, AGP, do we have any callers that would like to give us public comment on item B one?
Yes, caller, go ahead.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, welcome.
Yes, hello, mayor, this is Dan Shelly from Moro Bay. I, I wish to speak on item B one.
Yes, Dan, go ahead.
I have heard said amongst the council that, that, that service users should pay, pay by service. In other words, that they should recompense the city for whatever city staff time that they use. And I would propose to you that this is double taxation. For those of us that live here, I'll just take myself, for example, I, I, I pay property taxes. They go up two percent a year whether the value of my house goes up or not, which includes measure Q. I play, I pay sales taxes, I pay all of that. So then, if my water use skyrocketers, this hasn't happened and I knock on wood that it won't, you, you charge me sixty-five dollars to, to check it out. I, I, I am absolutely being double taxed. I'm, I'm, I'm helping to, to pay for the city services, the city staff and, and all of that through my city taxes. But then you're gonna charge me on top of that for a simple service. I'm not talking about building a house. And, and I can understand having higher fees for out of, out of city residents that don't, that aren't paying our city taxes. But, but for those that are, that are just simple things like, like my, my water bill is doubled and tripled and I haven't, I haven't changed anything and you're gonna charge me sixty-five dollars? That, that just seems insane to me. And, and, and I haven't had it happen, but for me, for anything that I might want, I'm gonna pay again. Even though my initial taxes are, are really what's supporting the base of, of staffing. I, I'm seeing double taxation and I'm opposed to that, so. While I don't, I don't disagree with deferring rate increases, I'm, I'm just against the rate increases in their entirety, except with the exception of out-of-town applicants. And, and they don't pay our taxes, they don't pay tax base in, in, in Moro Bay. And so I don't have any problem with them being subjected to these additional fees because they're not helping out with our tax base. That's my comments. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Dan. AGP, any other public comment?
Go ahead, caller.
Hello?
Kent?
Kent, are you there?
Can you call for Craig Kent?
Kent, are you there?
I'm here.
We're getting, uh, do you have a TV on in the background or a computer on? We're getting, we're getting feedback.
About now, can you hear me?
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. Go ahead.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I would like to comment on a couple of things. I was in attendance to most, if not all, of the working group meetings with Mr. Endersby and the staff members. During those meetings, we had an opportunity to go into the consultant report in detail. I have actually worked up a spreadsheet on that. And I have a pretty good understanding of what was done and I'm trying to be brief because I've only got three minutes, but distilling it down, we were basically advised that the estimate of hours was done by the consultant by asking the harbor patrol staff how much time they spent on liver boards. There was, as, as far as we were told, there was no effort to distinguish between other costs other than the time they spend on liver boards. And it turns out under discussion that most of that time is spent doing ordinance enforcement and monitoring on all of the vessels in the harbor. And that fee increase for the, the forty-four dollar fee that's being proposed is to cover the costs associated with those hours. The actual hours that the harbor patrol spends with the specific approved liver boards is a, a small portion of that and there is no audit record of the, a time that was spent. It's simply an estimate which includes all of the vessels in the harbor. And so the issue we have is that we are being asked to pay significantly increased administration, monthly administration fee for ordinance monitoring and all the vessels in the harbor. And unlike the compared program for rental properties, there is no economic benefit for the liver boards in this. There's no business benefit and there are no extra benefits that are given to the liver boards. With respect to the comparable cost to other harbors, the other harbors in the state, virtually all of them that were mentioned have exclusive With respect to the comparable cost to other harbors, the other harbors in the state, virtually all of them that were mentioned have exclusive restroom and shower facilities for live boards. The City of Moro Bay, the Harbor District has public restrooms and very recently has converted two showers, one women and one's men shower to use by the live boards. However, those showers are closed overnight and they are subject to break-ins and vandalism by public. And so the 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 cost of doing that is actually borne by other revenues that the city gets in any event. So that the there's no mechanism nor should there be a mechanism for charging a load boards for that because of the other revenue. Same with waste service and Thailand stock and the park and that sort of thing. The fund sources are.
Thank you, Kent. Your three minutes is up. Thank you so much for your public comments.
Yep, rest of it's covered in my email. Thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you. AGP, any other calls?
Betty Winholz.
Okay, Betty, welcome.
Thank you. I would like to speak to one of the miscellaneous items under a community development, which is the appeal fee which is being raised, proposed at some point from going to $250 to $275 and eventually $300. And I would just like to remind the council that this is different from all other fees. This is what allows the public access into decisions that have been made through a government body, whether that's the Planning Commission or the City Council. And this is a fee that should not be approaching cost recovery. It's a fee that allows public access or voice into one's government. And while $25 may seem like a little bit of money to raise, even to just leave it at the 250, I'll give you an example. I did an appeal on some trees that were proposed, city trees that were proposed to be cut. And it cost me $400 to get an arborist to fight that decision. So though you think I'm only paying 250 to make that decision, it ended up being closer to $700. So I I would encourage you not to raise that particular fee for any reason, because it's our public in it's our road into public input into decisions that you have made that we can appeal. And then just a general comment that the philosophy that is now adopted that we need to approach full recovery, I think is a mistake and it bounces a little bit off off of what Mr. Sedley said that we already pay through our land taxes and sales tax. The general operating of these different departments. And it seems to me, particularly when it came to parks and recreation a few years ago, that those fees and the use of renting our parks went up dramatically. And yet those are services that the public already pays for through our taxes. And so I would encourage you not to go to a full recovery. I think that's inappropriate. I think what you need to do is find that balance and I think that's what COVID is seeking. You're seeking to do with the COVID is how high can we go without discouraging people from even using our facilities? So I think that I hope you will keep that in mind as you make the decision to hopefully stay the increases for now and maybe not even raise them for quite a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Any other public comment, AGP?
Go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, last time and then I'll leave you alone. My name is Phil Hill. It's interesting. I'm glad that my cohort, that one of the fellows is meeting because he's very knowledgeable was said what he said. Imagine my frustration that in addition to the $8,000 I'm paying a year, part of which goes to the $22,000 in the lease fees. When we talked about it and he found I found out, we found out that the majority of the expenditure is attributed to chasing around other illegal live boards, not us, not the compliant people. They're on other boats that are not live boards. They're the other boats out there. And one of the complaints by Eric and we we noted this is that they've never had any luck in enforcing it. While he was telling me that I was going to be paying $44 a month more than I ever have before, which he had not presented to the Harbor Advisory Board, by the way, the proposal he gave to them was entirely different and a lot smaller. He asked me and the other people to help him rewrite the rules so they could have some teeth in the laws because the only time they took anybody to court about being an illegal live board, the judge threw it out of court. So this is why I don't, this is another reason I don't want to spend this money in this fashion, in any fashion. I don't mind paying my fair share, which I feel I already am doing. Again, I've never had any live boards, any harbor department services whatsoever. And my fees that I pay every two years more than covers the time invested in me as a live board. There's no other, no other work. Thank you very much. I'm done.
Thank you, Phil. Appreciate it. AGP, next call?
No, sir. I don't see anybody else with their hand raised.
Okay, just wait one second and hearing no other, seeing no other public comment, I'll close public comment, close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and potential motion. Let's start with Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Davis, would you like to lead us off on discussion?
Yes, thank you. And I'll just talk about the slip fees. I attended the commercial fishermen's organizations meeting on in February when Eric made his presentation about the slip fees. And there were a lot of questions from the fishermen about how the fees are used and whether they the costs actually justify the fees. So a couple of weeks later, I met with Tom Hafer and Jeremiah O'Brien to see to to talk about the fees and see if we could reach some sort of agreement. And one of the things that we thought would be useful to add transparency and to make this more palatable to the commercial fishermen was to establish a a specific fund for the slip fees that would capture the revenues from the users and then all of the expenditures. And Tom and Jeremiah thought that that was a good idea and they also thought that the increase from $5.10 to $7.10 along with the annual COLA would be acceptable to the rest of the fishermen. And they were going to go to the cable committee and see if the cable committee would help support the slip fee fund with an annual contribution. Because of COVID, the committee, the cable committee has not been able to meet yet. So that's still on the board. So I I want to, I will support the the item tonight, the the full master fee schedule, but I would like to ask our finance director about the feasibility of setting up a separate fund to cover the slip fee revenues and expenses. So that's, that's my.
Thank you. Okay, appreciate that. Councilmember Heller.
About that, I got it done in one button.
Way to go.
I'm I'm making headway. You know, when I look at this fee schedule, which obviously the council's talked about, been much discussed by the community for a long time, and I suspect that any city in the country has the same discussion for perpetuity. And it's important one, you know, we're charging, charging fees for the services that we provide. And I think it's important to think back on really one of the council's goals that has been a goal for one council after another that seems to kind of get passed along, which is to achieve fiscal sustainability. Now, that's kind of a fancy term, in my opinion, for, you know, the money that comes in, you know, you can't spend more than the amount of money that you're bringing in. And hopefully you can bring in a little more money than what you spend so that you can build up a savings account. Fortunately, we've done that with the general fund emergency reserve account. But our commitment to a fiscally sustainable city doesn't have an asterisk that says unless there's a virus and all the businesses are shut down. It doesn't say, yeah, we want this except when this happens. And that's why our lack of fiscal sustainability has never been achieved and never will be achieved as long as we continue to make concessions for whatever the current economic conditions are. So my position on this item is our ability to provide specific services is based on what it costs for us to provide those services. Now, we can have discussions till the cows come home about how high the fees are and it shouldn't cost that. And I do think we should be having those discussions. But I think before we reduce fees or delay fees or postpone fees or make deals on well, we'll do this if you do that, we need to look at our operations and we need to cut expenses. That is within our control and lower fees will follow. But to suspend fee increases, which are based on what us, what would cost us to now to provide these services is just letting a bleeding wound go untreated. We need a tourniquet right now. And that tourniquet is the fees go up, I'm sorry, department heads reeling your expenses, then we'll reduce fees. So I'm opposed to item B1 for those reasons. Thank you.
Did you say you're you're opposed to be one?
That's great.
Okay. Councilmember Addis.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes, yes, I'm having technical difficulties. In general, I don't like to raise fees, but I feel like we've had a lot of discussion on this. I think it's we've come to as fair of a place as we can come to. The city needs to recover costs. The harbor needs to recover costs and I am pleased that we're looking at delaying this fee increase due to the coronavirus. So I would be in support.
Okay, thank you so much for that. And Councilmember McPherson?
Yes, thank you. Well, just to remember how we got here, we did do an extensive study and and it was based on the assumption that we should eventually recover our costs for discretionary services. And these are services that are personal choice by citizens. It's not the essential services that our government relies is providing. And so while I didn't agree with all of the necessary increases, or at least the estimates that were provided, I think as a concept, it makes sense. And I really do appreciate our staff realizing that at this point in time with the businesses where they're at and with development kind of stalled, that it's a good thing to postpone that increase, especially when it comes to development because the permitting process and the planning, we need that to continue. So I would support the staff recommendation and I appreciate all of the work that the harbor director did to work with the folks to try to come to a compromise solution. So I'm ready to support the staff recommendation.
Thank you for that. And I too support the staff recommendation and would concur with a majority of all of the comments that have been made. Councilmember Heller, I I was tracking very well with your comments specifically. I think your opposition, at least the way I heard it, was the delay in the implementation of cost recovery. And and it goes back to the issue of COVID-19 and giving some concession to the community with regard to the impacts that individuals, businesses and others have felt as a result of this, which have resulted in significant financial downturn. Because I realize that these kinds of studies are not based upon precise science. They're not always 100% accurate. But with regard to consistency and conformity with the methodology used by other cities, the methodology that we have used is from a very reputable firm and also involves significant staff input and captures, in my opinion, the best case that we can for what are our actual costs for the city. Given that and the need to maintain fiscal responsibility, I would move that the excuse me, that the proposed master fee schedule be reviewed, which we've done, and I would move for the adoption of resolution number 36-20, which updates the city's master fee schedule for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. The resolution will also rescind resolution number 88-19 that adopted the current fiscal year 2019, 2020 master fee schedule and replaces it in its entirety for the new fiscal year.
I second that motion.
So motion by Councilmember Heading for the staff report, seconded by Councilmember McPherson. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
And Councilmember Heller?
No.
Motion carries for one.
Thank you for that. And again, thank you, staff, for all of your work on this. And Mr. Andrewsby, thank you for the time you've spent also. And thank you for your concise and very complete answers. I appreciate that. With that, that moves us, pardon me?
You're welcome. Sorry.
So, okay. With that, I'll move to item C-1. Approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Moro Bay Open Space Alliance related to Serrito Peak Eagle Rock. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to quickly introduce this item and and thank our city attorney, as well as Joe Panoni, who assisted on this effort and Chris you and I will be making the presentation. And also just extend our sincere gratitude to the community and the Moro Bay Open Space Alliance for fundraising to recoup the costs of Serrito Peak to be able to hold it as open space in perpetuity. And with that, I will turn it over to our city attorney. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you tonight is an MOU that staff is recommending City Council approve. Memorandum of Understanding with Mimbozza, the Moro Bay Open Space Alliance and the city. And it essentially will provide the city with the recovery of the money that was spent on purchasing Eagle Rock, also known as Serrito Peak, a number of years ago. A short timeline of what brought us to tonight. In December 2011, there was the proposal for a new single family residence at Eagle Rock and permits were secured and those permits were then the subject of a lawsuit that was alleging that there were environmental issues. To make a long story short, the court ordered the property owner to engage in some further actions before any permits could actually be reissued. At that point, the property owner, Jane Riddle, she approached the city about purchasing the property. And the city actually on May 23, 2017, purchased it for below market value. The city put $350,000 in escrow for the purchase price. Before escrow closed, $85,000 was taken back out of escrow to go back to the city to provide payment for the legal fees that another law firm, not Alshire and Winder, hadn't incurred in defending the lawsuit brought against the city. So at the end of the transaction, $265,000 was provided to Jane for the property. So the property since then has been in possession of the city. The city has the title of the deed. When the city actually made this purchase, there was the intent and the hope that there would be a nonprofit conservancy group that would be able to step forward and then purchase the property from the city, take ownership of the property and maintain it as open space. Between now and then, there has not been a group that has been able to actually commit to purchasing the property and taking over title. However, the Moro Bay Open Space Alliance, and I did want to mention some of the folks involved in that group that have been engaged in the fundraising for this money. Glenn Silaway, Joe Ingraffia, Kida Metzger, Ken Green, Noah Smuckler, and also Marty Lamelli has been working with the group. They spearheaded fundraising and they have raised They spearheaded fundraising and they have raised $265,000 now, which this MOU will provide to the city. It'll go into the general fund. The money is not committed to any specific use, especially during these financial times. That's a windfall for the city. In exchange for the receipt of this money, Mimbosa is asking that the city pledge to keep the land as open space and also that Mimbosa can put up a small memorial on the site thanking the donors. Must be noted that this money was raised throughout the community to preserve the open space. The MOU itself has a couple of other notable aspects to it. For one, the general philosophy of my office is that all future councils shouldn't be bound necessarily by an MOU. So the city after five years could cancel the MOU if it so chose to do. Furthermore, Mimbosa could cancel the MOU if they'd like to. But once it's signed, the money will be transferred to the city and the intent is the city will preserve it as open space. So that's where we're at tonight. Sometimes opportunities are presented where there just really aren't that many strings attached. And Mimbosa set out to try to originally purchase the property and then it turned into that they raised the money to reimburse the city for the original purchase. So to be clear, after this transaction is completed, if it is, the city keeps title of the property, but the city will have an infusion of $265,000 into its general fund with a commitment to keeping the property's open space. That concludes my staff report. And if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Great, Chris. Thank you for that presentation. Appreciate it. And with that, I'll open it up to council questions. Councilmember Addis, would you like to start us off, please?
Yeah, I don't really have any questions. I've been familiar with Mimbosa for a very long time. I really want to applaud the efforts of Mimbosa. I've been to a couple of the events and I remember way back when the very first murmurings were happening about preserving Eagle Rock and Serrito Peak. So I just really want to say thank you and I'm excited. This is the right time to move forward and I appreciate all that Mimbosa has done.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, any questions?
Yes, the original purchase was made using general fund emergency reserve dollars. And I wonder if it is the intent to return this money to the general fund emergency reserve, which is kind of just a bookkeeping thing because we are going to be using our emergency reserve almost immediately as we go through the COVID response. So that's my question.
That is, that is a determination to be made by the city council on where this money should be deposited and what use it should be put towards. It certainly is an option to return it to exactly the fund that it came from, came from, or to put it in the general fund.
Okay, thank you. And I guess that would be my wish, just to make it a pure transaction. And that's all my questions.
Thank you so much for that. Councilmember McPherson, questions?
I do not have any questions. I, I will have some comments, though.
Okay. Councilmember Heller, questions, sir?
Yes, first off, hats off to Mimbosa for raising what is a substantial amount of money for open space that is such a beautiful, beautiful place. I can't imagine how difficult that is to raise that kind of money and it's done a really remarkable job since 2011, I believe. The question I had just to confirm, so it'll, it'll, it'll be basically the city's property and it'll be the city's responsibility to maintain it. Is that right, Chris?
The city has had that responsibility and has held title since 2017. To be clear, when the city originally purchased the property, it appeared that there was a clear council intent to basically find someone willing to purchase the property and maintain it as an open space. Over the last three years, there's been no organization that has come forward that said that they would purchase it from the city and keep it as an open space. My understanding is that it is a relatively small space and some of the conservancy organizations that one was hoping would purchase it, preserve it, they usually purchase larger properties. But the city has had the responsibility maintaining it and has had title since it was purchased and that will continue.
Okay. So is there some, there's some way that a small portion of that parcel near the, near the, where the road connects to it could be allowed to have a small house built on it and the balance of the property be left as open space so that we might get a more of a market value for the property as opposed to what's been raised by Mimbosa?
Well, as it stands right now, the city has a full title to the property and there are not restrictions on the city's use of that property right now on the deed. This MOU is intended to commit the city to preserving it as open space. But that would be a council decision on what to do with this property.
But the city could potentially do that, it sounds like, if they wanted to.
There presently are not any restrictions on title on what the city can or can't do with the property. That would be subject to, you know, zoning and getting permits and whatnot for either the city or somebody else.
Okay, thanks. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I didn't have any questions. I do have some comments. With that, I will go ahead and open it up for public comment. And Zeke, I think we have a video and maybe any other public comment that might be there?
Would you like to do the video first or the public comment?
Why don't we do the video first followed by public comment?
All right.
And is there anybody that would, is there to introduce the video?
Yes, let me put Glenn on.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Glenn, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and staff. I'm the co-chair of the Minnesota, of Mimbosa, Morro Bay Open Space Alliance. And this been, this project since 2017 has been a consuming passion for us. I want to say that a couple of things. We, you didn't mention Nicole Dorfman, who was a member of our board and has been our fundraising chair, and she's been very important in making this to happen. We, we kicked off our fundraising in September of 2017 on a beautiful day at the foot of the park in, in a block club. And we're blessed on that first day to receive a check for $25,000 from the Larry Hillblum Foundation. And ever since then, we have worked as a board and I'm very proud of them. Pay attention at the end of video for the names of some really important people in this project. We've worked hard to bring this to fruition. One thing I would note in Mr. Newmeyer's comments, this MOU is not exactly a no strings attached document. We are doing this to pursue open space, undeveloped open space forever on this property. And to the extent that future councils will have action and we understand that, but those of us in this community who've worked so hard to make this happen are going to be watching it at the same time. And if need be, as the residents around the peak have demonstrated more than once, we will engage in protecting that going forward. For now, next, I would like to have you take a look at this short video that actually Zeke made and it gives you a bit of the history of this project. Zeke?
Give me a minute.
The Morro Bay Open Space Alliance is happy to announce the successful conclusion to a fundraising campaign to preserve Eagle Rock, also known as Serrito Peak, as undeveloped open space. Our board approved the effort to raise this money in response to a request by the city of Morro Bay in June of 2017. And now we are delighted to be able to transfer $265,000 to the city to preserve Eagle Rock as open space forever.
Eagle Rock is an ancient volcanic dome located in the heart of Morro Bay. It is part of the same 24 million-year-old system that formed the Nine Sisters, including Morro Rock. Local Native American tribes visited the rock and used it in ceremonies eons before the current stands of eucalyptus appeared, and they still consider it sacred. Today, those eucalyptus provide shelter to migrating monarch butterflies as well as hawks, osprey and owls.
Generations of Morro Bay residents grew up exploring the peak, including native son and world-renowned orchestral conductor Kent Nagano, whose daughter Karen Kai performed a memorable benefit concert on behalf of the Eagle Rock Campaign. Local residents still walk up the rock for a spectacular view of the bay or a sunset to watch whales or birds, to picnic, or just to experience the silence.
Prior to Mimbosa's involvement, neighbors, along with allies from near and far, joined together to resist a large residential development in a highly visible space near the top of the peak. Finally, the widespread support for preservation won over and the private owner agreed to sell the property to the city with the understanding that it would be preserved. That's when Mimbosa's work began. In September 2017, Mimbosa initiated our Eagle Rock Campaign with a block party at the foot of the peak. Buoyed by a sparkling day and blessings by Chumash and Salinian tribal members, the work began in a festive atmosphere. Mimbosa continued fundraising with the wonderful Nagano Benefit Concert, a matching fund challenge by Castle Wind, a wind energy development company, donations from businesses and residents, and large gifts from foundations. In the end, over 175 individual donors contributed to our successful campaign.
Mimbosa is committed to the preservation of open space in and around Morro Bay. We do our work with the ongoing help of members and volunteers who share the vision of Morro Bay as a dynamic community that grows within boundaries that respect its heritage. Our next challenge includes the large, important and unique land owned by Chevron on the northern and eastern boundaries of the city.
The first steps are almost in hand to preserve the open space separation between Morro Bay and Cayucas, but the next phase will include the incomparable Alva Paul Creek that streams through Delmar Park. Going forward, Mimbosa will be working to preserve the special property that perfectly fits with the character of our community and our industries. We welcome you to join us in the ongoing quest to get a permanent green belt for Morro Bay, preserving our unique heritage and character for generations to come.
Here's how we think about open space. We conceive that the land belongs to a vast family of which many are dead, few are living, and countless numbers are still unborn. We welcome you to join us. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. And Zeke, do we have other public comments?
Yes, sir. Okay, go ahead, caller.
Hello and welcome.
Betty, are you there?
Yes, is that for me? Thank you. This is Betty.
Betty, welcome.
Thank you. I would like to first express my appreciation to Mimbosa to acknowledge the fact that the community came together before their existence to help save that rock and that that was the beginning actually and very important. So thank you for that. I do want to also refer back to the email I sent to council regarding this because there was discussion of this back in July 11th of 2017 and there has not been a discussion since. And at that time, very good questions were raised by the council, which even tonight have not been addressed. One of those is the option to accept what I perceive to be a lowball amount of money compared to what was borrowed from, that was promised to the city. The original purchase price was $350 and the $85,000 was not part of that. Now, whether or not you choose to accept the lower amount, and that's fine, but I think you need to be honest about that. I think you need to acknowledge that the original price was not $265,000 and that you are making a concession here for goodwill or for whatever reason, but that according to the staff report, that that was an erroneous report, a statistic within the report, I should say. Also, it sounds like the discussion of whether it's the pros or cons of deeding the property back to the city is not being discussed tonight either. And it was promised in 2017 that that could be a discussion. I, maybe the city attorney's response to that is that he doesn't believe that MOU should last for a long time. I would refer you to the MOU that you had with the company that you bought the land for, for the sewer plant, which lasted for a long time. But regardless, I do believe that if you sign the MOU, it should be for a long period of time. So I would hope that you would not make that part of your emotion tonight to make it come back in five years. I think the idea of selling the, the lower lot had been discussed back in the day and it was raised again by Commissioner Heller tonight, sorry, councilmember Heller tonight. It was raised by Mayor Irons in 2017. And I think it's not a bad idea. It doesn't have to be done tonight, but that may be something the council should pursue to recoup another couple of hundred thousand dollars at least toward the purchase of this property or to re, put back into our emergency fund. And to that end, I would support Mr. Davis's motion, desire that this money go back into the emergency fund because that's where it came from. And there was talk at the time that was, whether that's an appropriate expense from an emergency fund and surely, just as he's saying, it may be a matter of just protocol, but I hope that you do put it back in there before you ended up spending it for other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. AGP, any other public comment?
Yes, caller 7327.
Hello, Mr. Mel, this is Dan Telly from Morro Bay speaking.
Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you, staff. Thank you, council. In 2017, as now, I think it was horrible that $350,000 was spent out of our emergency fund. Clearly, we, today, we have spent hours and hours and hours reviewing the dire circumstances of our emergency reserves at our city budget and talking about appropriate appropriations out of our emergency reserves and keeping it there for true emergencies, which Eagle Peak, Serrito, is not a true emergency. And so it was a misexpenditure truly in every sense of the word, in my opinion. It seems obvious why they want to leave it as, as, as city property because they don't want to pay property taxes and they don't want to maintain it. The city is taking that, that loss of revenue for that property and they are going to further spend, spend city workers' money or hire arborists or whatever to maintain it. We're throwing money away like there's no tomorrow on, on this project and I don't get it. I don't understand any city council member that's listening to my voice, how they could possibly vote for this knowing the direness, that, that this city could go under within the next year if, if things don't go on the upside for this city. How, how can you vote for this and be, well, now we're unincorporated because we defaulted and now, but, but we got, we got this property up here. I have, I have nothing against Mimbosa. I, I didn't appreciate Mr. Silaway's comments that he's going to watch to protect it. That's, to me, that's an implied threat in the future. I'm going to watch and make sure you do, just as I say, and I, I don't appreciate implied threats. Again, my, my position and stance is that, is that this is a misexpenditure of, of emergency reserve funds. And further, there is, there is no appraisal on this property. You're, you're giving it away for, for one, for one, one half to one. I think I read the paperwork, it was appraised back in 2017 at $600,000 to $750,000. Giving money away, again, I like Mr. Heller's idea about developing a portion, splitting it, and make the city getting some of what it needs for its emergency reserves. But city council, if you buy this lock, stock, and barrel, I don't know how you look taxpayers in the face and say that you're conserving their funds, because you're absolutely not. You're absolutely not if you approve this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Is there any other public comment, AGP?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hello?
Hello, are you there?
Hello? Hi, is it me?
Yes.
I'm not sure. Oh, this is John Weiss.
Oh, welcome, John.
And it's taken me, actually, almost two hours to get online. Actually, it took me, yeah, about two hours. Anyway, I'd like to echo Jeff Heller's comments, and also Betty Windbolt's comments, and support their comments for that, and also Dan Sully. Unfortunately, my opening comments, I realized were way past that time, but I did want to congratulate the fundraising that took place for the $265,000. But as Jeff and what Betty have suggested, perhaps we can recoup a little more law, of the, recoup some income from that. So, that's my comments on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. AGP, other public comment?
Melanie?
Hi. Yes, hi. I just would like to point out that we're kind of in an emergency right now, so I think it's kind of important that we use what we have to sell to make money for this city. I realize we got Cerito Peak at a bargain basement price, and we were reimbursed $85,000, but in this climate, why wouldn't we get this appraised and use the money for our emergency fund? We can not only replace the funds that we spent before, but we can add more to that emergency fund. I mean, this, we can't, the city is not a nonprofit. Mambosa is. Mambosa can work with other people, other nonprofits, other agencies, and they can raise the funds and pay fair market price. This thing should be appraised. It's not, why are we giving away the house when we don't have any house? We don't have any funding for any of this. You guys hold the cards, work with them to obtain this at a market price, don't sell us short. We are the citizens of Moro Bay. We pay our taxes. We do not want to give stuff to, we're not a nonprofit. We need to, this is crazy. I know there's a connection with Mambosa, and that's fine, but, you know, we shouldn't be taken advantage of just because they think that nobody else wants this property. I'm sorry, but you know what? Put it at market rate, appraise it. This is not hard. We are not a nonprofit, and this is an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Nobody else with their hands raised?
Okay, give it a second. If hearing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. I can begin. I was involved very early on with this notion of maintaining Cerito Peak as a beautiful, iconic, and sacred place in Moro Bay. The prior owner, Mrs. Janaye Riddell, approached us as council after the death of her husband, and indicated that she did not want to develop this property, that she preferred to have it be maintained in perpetuity into open space. And with that, the city council, which I was part of at that time, undertook the effort to assist in allowing an organization to form that would assist us in paying back, or assist the community in paying back the city, for funds that were expended out of the general fund to acquire this property at a very reduced price, as you have heard. The opportunity to maintain and preserve this forever is now, and I just want to thank the members of Mambosa for their outstanding efforts as community members to engage in this effort, including Glenn, Joe, Ken, Noah, Marty, Tina, and Nicole, and many others that worked to make this happen. Raising $265,000 to return to the city is no small effort, and I very much value and appreciate the opportunity to be involved in making a decision to allow this beautiful, iconic, and sacred place to be preserved into perpetuity. With that, I'm very pleased to make the motion to approve the MOU with Mambosa, through which Mambosa will reimburse the city of Moro Bay $265,000, that the city paid to purchase Eagle Rock to preserve it as open space, and that the $265,000 be placed into the general fund reserve account.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Heading, second by Councilmember McPherson for staff report, and moving the funds into the general fund reserve account. I'll open it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Heller, yes. Go ahead.
Was Don first?
No, sorry, you go.
I was playing with my buttons. Go ahead, Councilmember Heller.
No, I'm not the only one.
Go ahead, Councilmember Heller.
So, by way of disclosure, I am fortunate enough to live close enough to Cerito Peak, that I sit on my deck outside my house, and I look up at the eucalyptus trees and the birds that are circling around and building nests, and it's one of my favorite things to do. It is absolutely a beautiful piece of geography in Moro Bay, and I want to say that, so that everybody understands that I love Cerito Peak, I love the efforts that Mambosa has done to preserve it and to raise money. But I must say that it seems like this agenda and the agenda on the prior meeting, it was, well, how many ways can we find to give away money? My proposal years ago, before I was on the council, because this whole thing prompted me to actually walk up there, which I'd never done before, walk up there and realized, you know, there's a really big expensive house on the right side of this property, right at the road, and there's a really big expensive house on the left side of this property, right at the road. If the parcel were adjusted in some way, couldn't a smaller, medium-sized house be built right here on the road, and the balance of the property, which is what everybody loves so much, be left as open space? I would think since, whenever we paid the $350,000 out of our emergency reserve fund, which I protested vehemently at that time via public comment, that the value of even that front portion of that lot has maybe doubled by now. I don't know. It seems without a professional appraisal, at least of the front parcel, and what that might be worth to the city, it seems premature to, almost a gift of public lands. I'm not an attorney, and I don't know if I want to pay for Chris to weigh in on this, but to take this $265,000 and then have complete liability for it, we pay property taxes on, we maintain it, and now there's this implication that it has to stay that way for perpetuity. It's just, it's not sound business practice. Is it a beautiful, wonderful place? Yes. Can we accomplish some, generate some more revenue by just taking 25% of that parcel and letting it be strictly controlled and developed, and leave the balance for open space? That's what we should be doing. That's what we should be doing. This is another gift, and what is it going to get us? Is it going to really help us survive the economics of the pandemic? $265,000? No, do not. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Addis?
Well, I do think that open spaces are incredibly important, and I do think they're incredibly important during the pandemic. It might not be the economic solution, but even at the amount, you know, that was originally agreed on, that wouldn't be our economic solution either. I think this is an important venture. It was discussed, it was worked on very hard by community members for many, many years, and I think it's a true win, and it's a testament to what local people can do when they set their minds to something, and they want to do good for the community. And so, I just would encourage people to, you know, look at the way that a grassroots group of community members have come together and accomplished a goal, and done something that every single one of us can benefit from any day of the week, any day of the year, right here in our own backyard. So, I'm incredibly grateful for that work, and I want to say thank you to the team, and I'm excited to move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
This has been a great exercise in bringing people together, and it's been a hard thing, I know, to raise money. Very dedicated people have spent countless hours asking people to back up their passion with their money, and they have been wildly successful. And one of the great things that creates community is common space, and that's what this is, that's what Eagle Rock is. It's a place where people can come and relax and contemplate and enjoy the beauty of the city. This is not a business item, this is a community-building item. And one of the things that I particularly value is the relationship that we have built with our local Native American people, the Salinians and the Chumash, and we have preserved for them a site that has been sacred to them long before Europeans came to this continent. And I think that that's a partnership that is going to linger and build great dividends for the city. So, I fully support this purchase. Thank you.
Thank you. Playing with my buttons again here, sorry about that. And Councilmember McPherson?
Yes, thank you. Well, you know, as one of the founding members of Mambosa, and a former board member, I am so proud of our organization for taking on this challenge, and for successfully raising over a quarter of a million dollars to save one of the most beautiful and sacred sites in Moro Bay. And I want to first thank everyone who participated, and the 175 people who contributed to make this thing happen. I am disturbed by some of the comments that were made, because there seems to be a misunderstanding about how this happened and who's paying whom. This is not a case of a gift of public funds. The city chose, based on the recommendation of the former owner, to preserve this and to take city money three years ago to do exactly that, and that was the intention, to save that place. Now, what we are, what we're talking about is an organization that is paying the city back at a time when we need it desperately. So, I think we should be very grateful. It certainly is not a gift of public money to anybody. If anything, it's a gift from the public to the city. So, we have to keep that in mind. The other thing to keep in mind is that it doesn't cost the city anything or very much to maintain it. It already belongs to the city, so we have been maintaining it, and that consists mostly of fire prevention, taking away dead limbs. There is no other fancy maintenance associated with keeping that in its natural state, which is the way we want to keep it. So, I am so proud of this organization, and I'm so pleased to be able to support this memorandum of understanding, and if anything, I would agree with Betty, that it should be extended beyond the five years. I don't like the idea that some future council could do something else with that space. So, if there's a way to change that, I would do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Dearmeyer, could you just clarify the fact that we're not selling the property, please? Sure. There seems to be a mild misunderstanding on the transaction that's before the council tonight. The council purchased the property in 2017, and this MOU is not proposing the city sell the property to anyone. This MOU is basically what Mambosa said. It's Mambosa's giving the city money that was raised through, in exchange for a commitment from the city to keep it as open space. So, if this MOU is approved, the city still retains title to the property. No one's buying the property from the city. The city keeps the property. The MOU basically has three parts to it, really. One is the city will commit to continue maintaining the property, which means that it just simply clears fire hazards. The city's not developing it in any way, and the city's been doing that since 2017. So, the city would just keep doing what it's been doing. Second, the city is committing to take actions to preserve the property as undeveloped public open space, which, my understanding, the city already committed to do three years ago, but this is now putting it in an MOU. And third, Mambosa is asking that, in addition to that commitment to keep it as open space, that Mambosa can put a small memorial on the property. So, it's somewhat of an unusual transaction, in that Mambosa is, as Councilmember McPherson pointed out, the public's providing money to the city, and that money is basically pegged at the amount that the city paid out to Ms. Riddell three years ago. But there's no deed transfer, there's no title transfer. So, I hope that clears up what I'm perceiving as a misunderstanding, you know, what this transaction's about. Yes, and thank you for that. I appreciate that, Chris. With that, I'll just note also that my motion does include moving this money into the general fund reserve account as well. With that, thank you for the discussion, and I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Jeff, are you there? Councilmember Heller?
He's muted. Councilmember Heller?
Yeah, I'm here. I just lost my connection for a minute. Sorry about that.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, and I didn't touch any buttons either, it just.
We were just doing the roll call vote for this, the motion on the table, and it's your turn.
So, this is a roll call vote for C1?
Yes.
Okay, no.
Thank you. Motion carries for one.
Thank you. That ends item C1. Moves us to item D, council declaration of future agenda items. Councilmember Heller, any future items?
Yeah, I would like to suggest that the balance of the special meeting that was held just before this meeting be re-agendized as soon as possible, maybe another meeting Thursday night this week. I think there's some really critical issues there that need to be discussed, and I would hate to see them delayed any longer.
Oh, Councilmember Addis, support or questions?
Sorry, I was going to put something different forward. No, I don't, I guess I'm not totally clear on what the...
The request is to have a continuance of the discussion on the city finances as soon as possible, as early as potentially Thursday, to agendize that.
It's all the, it's all the items that were not covered in the special meeting agenda that started 3:00 today, which has to do with the four pillars and a number of other items that I think are important and need to be discussed, and I'd like to see those discussed in a format where a public comment could be taken for each of the items.
Oh, I thought we already were, I thought a bunch of that stuff was already coming back. The only one I...
But I would like it to come back very soon. It's, I consider those critical discussions that we need to have, rather than waiting two weeks.
The only one I was going to ask about that maybe is related to what Councilmember Heller is saying, was if we need to request for the cannabis to come back, or if that's definitely already coming back, the rest of it...
Jeff, are you there? Councilmember Heller?
He's muted.
Councilmember Heller?
Yeah, I'm here. I just lost my connection for a minute. Sorry about that.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. And I didn't touch any buttons either, just.
We were just doing the roll call vote for this, the motion on the table. And it's your turn.
So this is a roll call vote for C1?
Yes.
Okay, no.
Thank you. Motion carries for one.
Thank you. That ends item C1, moves us to item D, council declaration of future agenda items. Councilmember Heller, any future items?
Yeah, I would like to suggest that the balance of the special meeting that was held just before this meeting be re-agendized as soon as possible. Maybe another meeting Thursday night this week. I think there's some really critical issues there that need to be discussed and I would hate to see them delayed any, any longer.
Councilmember Addis, support or questions?
Sorry, I was going to put something different forward. And I don't, I guess I'm not totally clear on what the.
The request is to have a continuance of the discussion on the city finances as soon as possible, as early as potentially Thursday, to agendize that.
It's all the, it's all the items that were not covered in the special meeting agenda that started three o'clock today, which has to do with the four pillars and a number of other items that I think are important and need to be discussed. And I'd like to see those discussed in a format where a public comment could be taken for each of the items.
Oh, I thought we already were, I thought a bunch of that stuff was already coming back. The only one I.
But I would like it to come back very soon. It's a, I, I consider those critical discussions that we need to have rather than waiting two weeks.
The only one I was going to ask about that maybe is related to what Councilmember Heller is saying was if we need to request for the cannabis to come back or if that's definitely already coming back. The rest of it, I feel like we made good decisions during our special meeting. I feel like council has pretty clear direction.
Maybe I could just get clarity. I think I understand, Jeff, what you're saying. Appreciate that. May I ask Mr. Collins or Ms. Callaway if we missed any specific items you were looking for guidance on?
I think we got a good indication of where council needs more information on. And some of those things that would take some time. Obviously, as, as Mr. Heller has mentioned, this is an urgent thing and we're going to move on as quickly as possible. But the things that were provided input on and direction on, we're going to take a little bit of time to do that and it could be, come back quicker than two weeks. So we certainly want to honor the urgency that, that, that he's expressing. So hopefully that helps. But there, yeah, I think we have a pretty good, clear idea of what needs more work and what we need to do to get it back to council for a better discussion.
Great. And I'll just chime in too. And Dawn, thank you for your comments. Jeff, I, I support that item coming back as soon as possible. It may not be able to happen by Thursday, but I think this will be the beginning of an ongoing discussion of, of financial issues as things transition. And so I would support that coming back, but doesn't sound to me like staff would have much concrete by Thursday, but perhaps in the next two weeks, if you'd support that.
You know, if that's the best I can do. In the meantime, is there, is there a possibility I could submit comments in writing and make them part of the record for the special meeting?
For special meeting that already occurs?
The special meeting that occurred this evening earlier or should it set the weight?
Well, Chris, I'll just ask you, I mean, we've already had commentary. Is there? Chris, you there?
Yes, I'm here. I'm not sure if I understand the question. I suppose, let me try to clarify. Councilman Heller, you're asking if you can submit as part of the record a memorandum at this point or, or written comments to be included in the record for the special meeting?
Exactly, Chris. And I have no idea if there's a means to do that or not, but you know, I'm, I'm going to do something. I feel like I need to do something before two weeks. With respect, with respect to the importance of the four pillars and, and my comments on.
Well, the, the city, the city certainly would have a duty to preserve in its records communications received from you commenting on the special meeting in regards to whether it would officially be considered part of the special meeting record or minutes. That really doesn't have a procedure for it after the meetings occurred.
Okay. That's what I suspected, but I thought you would ask.
Councilmember McPherson, any comments?
No, I concur with you. I, I, we all know this is really important and I think we gave some general direction to staff. And I, hopefully they'll come back with any further issues that we, or decisions we need to make as soon as possible because we know how urgent this is.
Thank you. Councilmember Diggs?
Yes, I concur with Councilmembers Addis and McPherson. I think that we completed the agenda items this afternoon. We covered every, every task that was listed, gave direction to staff. And I'm ready for, to wait for staff to process that and bring us back some further recommendations, you know, whatever period of time that takes. I, I don't want to give them a deadline of, of Thursday. They, they need some time to, to get this adequate analysis.
Sounds like we have consensus to bring back update on financial issues for further discussion as soon as possible.
Okay, sounds good.
Good. Okay, other, Councilmember Heller, other agenda items?
Yeah, I have one more. I still think there's a lot of mis, a lot of misunderstanding in the community about the Department of Toxic, Toxic Substances and Control in their report, the basis of the report that they have that's out right now. Looking for a public comment. I think the deadline is May 22nd. I would, I would like to see that agendized in our first meeting in May so that there's a more thorough discussion and, and explanation of things so that the general public has a better understanding of what that process is and what's going on, what's going on there.
Good, thank you. Councilmember McPherson, your thoughts on that?
I don't have any strong thoughts on that. I think it depends on whether or not we have, I don't know what else is on the agenda for our next meeting and whether that's possible. I, I think I understand the issue and I, I know that there's some concern in the public and I know that you have been communicating with people to try to update them on exactly what this decision is. So maybe it could be on consent, some kind of an explanation and consent. That would be fine with me.
Okay, Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember McPherson. I think that Scott has given us a pretty full explanation, two meetings in a row now. And I'm, I'm not sure what there is left to misunderstand. But certainly if people, if we feel there are people who do not understand the issue, I'm happy to put it on the agenda as a consent item so that everybody gets, gets to see that or put it on the website, you know, whatever communication that we use. But I, I don't think that it warrants being an agenda item.
Okay, thanks. Good, let me just go to Councilmember Addis, please. Yes, Councilmember Addis?
I, excuse me, I would be fine with that being on consent. I think it's a good idea to put it on the website. I think that might be an easier solution than putting it on consent even because then the public would just have ready access to it all the time and wouldn't have to search through a variety of agenda items. And I'm not really sure there's a whole lot for council discussion or council decision making with that, which is why I would advocate more for the website where it's information that the public can put their hands on.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Heller. Did you want to add?
I was just going to say consent item is fine with me. I just, I still get a lot of questions from people, anything related to the environment and toxic chemicals or whatever, anywhere, you know, in our region is, is a hot, kind of a hot potato. And I think everything, everything we can do to communicate what the issue is better and consent was the perfect way to do it, so.
Good, thanks. And I'm fine with consent. We do have, knowing the agenda, future agenda, we have a large number of items that are coming. So I think a good written explanation would be helpful and I would support that as well. Thank you for that. Anything else, sir?
That is all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Addis, any agenda items?
No, I just had a question. Do we need to specifically request for the cannabis to come back? Or can we make the assumption that it'll be back within the next month or so based on our conversation about all the other economic items coming back?
My sense was there was a strong agree, agreement among council members for that to come back quickly. And I would assume that, and I think in Mr. Collins, remind me if I'm correct, Mr. Collins, you indicated that it would be coming back within 30 days or so?
Yeah, it'd be coming back in May, based on, we need to do a review of all the items in May and, and look at what's on the 12th and see what can fit and Mr. Mr. City Attorney's available time to put together revised or draft revised ordinances to, to comply. So we'll, we'll talk offline, but definitely sometime in May, unless Chris says otherwise.
Okay, good. Goodbye, Chris.
We can certainly have an agenda item in May. My understanding is that council is going to be asked to consider whether there should be further cannabis commercial activities allowed in the city with the understanding that right now there's two medical retail operations that are allowed. The agenda item will certainly go into a much greater discussion, but there are definitely more commercial cannabis opportunities. And the city did pass a cannabis tax that is sitting on the shelf that would apply to any and all commercial cannabis activities that would be allowed or permitted. So that'll be a, a council discussion.
Thank you. And I should clarify, thank you, Councilmember Addis. I assumed that's what you meant and I didn't clarify that, but it was the adult use and an update on the current permits. Okay, I would support that as well. And let's see, am I missing anybody? Councilmember McPherson, any comments on that?
I, I, no, I think that's fine. I think we've talked about that and I would support that and I don't have any items to add.
Okay, Councilmember Davis?
Just a note to Scott, don't forget you have a cannabis subcommittee to talk to as well.
There you go. That's true. Sounds like we have support. Sounds like we have support for that. I don't have any future agenda items. And I think Councilmember McPherson had no others. Councilmember Davis, any others?
No, I'm good. Thank you, John.
All right, good. Well, then that ends this meeting. I'll adjourn the meeting. The next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, May 12th, 2020 at 5:30 PM via teleconference. Thank you, be safe, be well and have a pleasant evening.